Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, December 4th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. I would ask, please, that you all silence your cellphones, and if anyone is making an audio or video recording of this open meeting, that they notify me as the chair, and the placement and operation of the recording equipment will not interfere with the conduct in this meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move into recognitions, and I'd like to start with one. That's okay with the board. I'd like to recognize Scott Zalinski, who was just elected to the Cape Cod Metropolitan Planning Organization. He was elected as the sub-regional representative for a three-year term for the towns of Born, Falmouth, Mashpee, and Sandwich. So congratulations, and thank you for your willingness to take that on. More recognitions. Ms. Scott Price?
Yes, I'd like to recognize Chief Tim Smith, Deputy Fire Chief Scott Thrasher, and firefighter Patrick, I can't remember his last name unfortunately, who allowed me to ride in the fire truck during the parade so I didn't have to walk, otherwise I would not have been able to participate, so I appreciate them for that.
Nice.
Great. Madam Chair?
Mr. Scally? I have two recognitions. The first is just that a Falmouth couple, Paul Glass and Charles D. Evans, received a 2023 AARP Massachusetts Andrus Award for Community Service recently. Mr. Glass and Mr. Evans are in their 70s. They moved to Falmouth in 2002. In 2013, they co-founded the LBTQ+ Elders of Color, a Boston-based organization that aims to provide aging folks of color with a community where they can socialize and learn. The award is named after AARP's founder Ethel Percy Andrus. Each state had a recipient, and Mr. Evans and Mr. Glass were among 30 nominees from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so certainly recognize them for their volunteer work. I'd also recognize DPW and Mr. McConerty with respect to their response to the Russell Road water main that occurred last week, and got a number of people in the area commented how quickly they got to it, and also Mr. Renshaw for devising that little update that was passed out to the residents in the affected area. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Brown? That was pretty impressive to get thank you letters from people after they had such a disastrous situation in their front yards and in their basements, so that was very nice of them to comment on that.
Anything else from the board? Okay, we'll move into announcements.
I just want to pronounce again that the East Falmouth Village Association will be having its tree lighting and holiday event on Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Smithy's Ice Cream in the East Falmouth Library, so come on down and have a little fun with us.
Madam Chair, I didn't have the time to, outside of open meeting, I'd like to announce to the rest of the board that I reached out to Town Council today for some language or for them to look into some alternatives to the dissolution of surplus firearms that may satisfy both sides of this argument amicably. We don't have all the information back, but I will certainly continue to press that to be able to present that at an appropriate time as soon as I get it.
Okay.
Any other announcements? I just have one quick one. MBL Falmouth Forum, December 8th, 7:30. Beyond Survival: The Journey of a Holocaust Survivor. Ruth Oppenheim. I think people know Jeff Oppenheim. He's been a stalwart of the town for a long time, and they are doing a seminar with Ruth Oppenheim, and I think it would be really interesting, and I just wanted to let the board know about that.
Glad to get another chance. I missed that last year.
It'd be really interesting. Okay, any other announcements? Okay, public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Anyone here for public comment? Yes. Come on up, Alan.
Thank you. Alan Robinson from Tupans Road and a member of Litter Free Falmouth. We'd like to announce that this Saturday and Sunday is Litter Free Falmouth's 4th Annual Late Fall Townwide Litter Cleanup. Anyone in the community can participate, and we encourage everyone in the community to participate. I'm glad there's a lot of people here, and I hope you all can participate. You can go to any roadside, park, beach, parking lot, community facility, or other public space you wish, and pick up litter for a minute or two, or for as long as you want. There will be several group cleanups at locations that will be posted on Sign Up Genius and Facebook on Wednesday, and related to that, you can get more information about the event by emailing litterfreefalmouth@gmail.com, or looking for Litter Free Falmouth on Facebook. And we very much encourage you to do it this weekend, but you know what? Any day is a day to pick up litter, and we think we're really seeing progress in our cleaner road sides in Falmouth, and we really much appreciate the community's participation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Come on up. You're up next, Ian. Yep, yes.
Good evening. My name's Nan Logan, Precinct 1, and I really, I think you all received my email regarding the disposition of the shotguns that we are replacing, and so you know about that, but the other thing I was realizing is that the value, as we've seen in the offer to buy, is well under $10,000, it's under $5,000. So as I understand, 30B, which is the universal procurement law, that would give us the opportunity to follow the policies that we have, you guys made, what, a year and a half ago, that allows us to destroy them. So some of them are guns that I could buy with my LTC. Your policy from that May 23rd, 2022, would allow those to be destroyed, and furthermore, the three short-barrel shotguns that I couldn't buy with my LTC, I think without a doubt should be destroyed because that follows the clear initiative that we had when we passed Article 13. Unfortunately, it didn't survive the Attorney General, but it certainly follows the policy of the Select Board from May. So hopefully, we'll do something. And I was really interested to hear that you've had that conversation with the Town Council, and I'll be looking forward to seeing what you're coming up with. It sounds like you're being thoughtful and creative and innovative and all the right things, so I look forward to hearing the good news whenever it comes through. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Schneider?
Barbara Schneider, co-founder of the Osprey Project, and I know that you didn't think you'd hear something about Osprey in December, but I wanted to report that last week, the Osprey Project met with an Eversource representative who's we've been working with. Contrary to how we were with Eversource a couple years ago, we have an incredible partnership going on and a lot of progress being made. We went over the remaining dilemmas that we have with where we need transformers having deterrence. It looks like we have an agreement that all the remaining problems may very well be fixed in time for Osprey season in mid-March, and I just wanted to let you know that we're really excited that we've come this far and no longer have to say that we have any kind of dilemma going to Eversource and asking for their partnership. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment? Yes.
I'm Hannah Vanisheran. I'm a resident of Glenwood Avenue, and I'm not here to speak to any agenda item, but I am here to reiterate the need for year-round affordable housing in Falmouth, and to say that I was very encouraged to see in the paper a few, around a month ago, comments by Town Manager Mike Renshaw and Dave Garrison supporting the idea of deed restrictions to increase the housing inventory of year-round affordable rentals, and the concept of deed restrictions would address the need of affordable housing now, and it's great to see you trying to diversify some of your approaches to this issue. Thanks.
Thank you.
Richard Dubey, Precinct 6. The cost of the new Falmouth Police Department shotgun that was approved by Town Meeting last year was $30,736. The total of the estimates and invoices that I received is $31,908.07, giving us a shortfall of $1,172.07. I'm certain the town will find a method of covering this, but why did this happen? It is a direct result of the continuing policy of this town that I spoke of this board several weeks ago. In many cases, the capital improvement articles that are presented by Town Meeting present best guesses when it comes to actual costs. An example would be a request for $134,000 for a truck and a plow. When basic research finds that the existing cost would be $95,635, a difference of $38,365. There are numerous examples of this in this year's warrant book. I received a letter of support from a man with 20 years' experience as procurement professional in Massachusetts. He states, quote, "While this practice has been in existence for a long time, in this town and others, it is unethical. The budget should reflect actual planned expenses supported by factual evidence and should not be based on a wish. Why weren't the estimates for the shotguns gathered prior to submitting an article to Town Meeting? I'm told that departments can't get estimates due to a lack of personnel and the expense. This makes no sense." I would ask, if it's within the purview of this board or the town manager, to create a policy that stated that any capital improvement request above $10,000, and you can choose a different figure if you wish, have two written estimates gathered prior to submitting the request to the Finance Committee. The policy can also allow for a cost-plus provision where a fixed percent, say 10% or 15%
Mr. Dubey, your two minutes are up.
Can I have 20 seconds more?
I can't give 20 seconds to everybody. I have to hold you to the two minutes.
It's strange, you gave four minutes last week to the gentleman who stood up here.
Okay. Two minutes are up. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, we will move into our committee interviews, and our first one is Steamship Authority Board of Governors, Peter Jeffrey.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. I come before you tonight to be asked to be reappointed to the Steamship Authority Board. I don't think my work's done yet. I think I've shown that I've been pretty enthusiastic about it, perhaps more enthusiastic about it than the general manager would care, but I am about focusing on transparency and accountability at the steamship. In terms of goals, I'd like to see the steamship move more towards climate, meeting the climate goals of Massachusetts, and without a strategic plan and a vessel replacement plan, we're not anywhere near close to that, so that's very concerning to me, as well as the transparency to not only the port towns and our traveling public, but as well to the board itself, if you've followed anything about the Sangati incident and when the board was notified. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I'm happy to answer any questions or
Questions from the board?
I would just comment that I've been following Mr. Jeffrey's service, and I appreciate it. He's done a very good job within the constraints of parameters of a position, doing the best he can. I would say also, I'm glad to hear that you're going to focus on the environmental aspect of it, and you know we've got a notice that there's comment period open for Senator Morant's bill, and I think in the future, we're going to be talking more about these issues.
I just want to compliment Mr. Jeffrey for the work he's been doing on the Steamship Authority. It's a voice of reason, and as an affected town, we need someone like you there making our case, so thank you very much.
And the board received several letters of support of your reappointment.
Madam Chair, so I made a motion to reappoint Peter Jeffrey to serve as a Falmouth member of the Steamship Authority Board of Governors with a term to expire December 31st, 2026.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Richard Merrick. Welcome, Mr. Merrick.
Good evening, and I'm new here, but I've been living in Falmouth since I moved here from Seattle in 1997. And moved to Seattle. Seattle is a very conservation-oriented community, and they're doing a lot of things that we see Falmouth doing as well, particularly with respect to waste management. So why am I interested in participating in this committee? It's a vacant position on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. To me, I have a great debt to pay to this community. This is a great place to live. I moved here to work at the Science Center, and I was there until I moved to DC for five years as a detail, the headquarters, and then retired back to here, and I continue to love living in Falmouth, and there's an obligation I feel I have to repay. That's why I'm on Town Meeting for Precinct 2. That's why I volunteer at Nobske Light. That's why we provide dinners over at St. Barnabas. So that's why I think I need to do this. The other side is what can I provide to Alan and to the committee? I have a long track record of working on conservation issues and providing advice to groups like you all, to legislative bodies. I worked on the Hill for about five years, which is interesting, but providing advice to NOAA leadership and to managers, so I can help there. I have that experience. I have a lot of experience working with small groups. I continue, after my retirement, to continue to work on a number of advisory groups with NOAA and other organizations. And I'm committed to recycling and composting. Part of that was coming from Seattle, where that was sort of built into the fabric of anyone who lived there, but the things we do here are so much like that, and we've recycled for a long time. We compost at home, and I'd love to see composting spread throughout the community and the recycling expand. So that's me, and I'll turn the floor to you all for questions.
Questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. Resume speaks for itself, and I heard what you said is a great reason to be on the committee, so thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, I have a motion to appoint Richard Merrick to serve on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2024.
Madam Chair, second, Ms. Scott Price's motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into a public hearing. Fee hearing, discuss and vote proposed fee changes for 2024. Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Should I read into the record the public announcements? Would you like me to do that, the public hearing announcement?
Actually, Mr. Zalinski can do that for you.
As provided under Chapter 119 of the Code of Falmouth, the public hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, December 4th, 2023, at 6:45 PM, to establish and promulgate fees which are effective as of January 1st, 2024, to be charged by the town, departments, and agencies except as provided by MGI School Department, Planning Board, Library, Town Clerk, Town Treasurer, and Collector of Taxes. The proposed changes and fees are listed below. Per the Select Board. Nancy Taylor, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I'd like to do is just give a brief summary overview, mostly for the benefit of the public. As you all know, toward the end of each calendar year, town departments are directed to review their existing fee structures and schedules, analyze what needs they have, and whether the fees are adequate or if they need to be adjusted. The results of the departmental reviews and the subsequent fee revision requests are then published in the local paper, included in your package is a copy of that local advertisement with regards to the public hearing notice, which includes a side-by-side comparison of the present fees for 2023, along with the new proposed fees for 2024. And Madam Chair and Select Board, following the public hearing, and if approved and adopted by the board, the new fee schedule will be effective on January 1st, 2024. What I'd like to do, Madam Chair, if you would entertain, is to walk through with the Select Board first each of the categories of the proposed 2024 fees, answer any questions that the board may have, and then at the discretion of the chairman, turn it over for public comment and input. Okay? So with that, let's start, as you can see in this part of your packet, we'll start with the Beach Departments. Annual sticker fees is the first category, and I'm lucky to, fortunate I should say, to have most of the staff department heads here as lifelines for me in case there are any questions that I can't answer. But are there any questions regarding the Beach Department annual sticker fee? Seeing no questions, we'll proceed on to swimming lesson fees. Present fee is $20. The proposed fee is a reduction of $5 to $15. Any questions with regards to that? Seeing none, we'll move right along to Conservation Department. And just a note, Chairman and Board, as you know, part of the schedule of fees has multiple fees within Conservation Department listed. What you're seeing here tonight with regards to the four deletions are those sections that are no longer required and we're recommending they be deleted from the schedule of fees. Any questions as regards to why those elements, those particular fees were deleted? All right, moving on to Department of Public Works, we're going to start first with Waste Management Facility permits. Permit stickers is the first kind of subcategory with regards to trip passes. Any questions in regards to those fees? The swap, I should say, the swap shop stickers, resident and taxpayer, we're proposing a new fee for 2024 of $10.
Question on that. Is that for a year or for every entry?
That's an annual fee.
Annual fee, thank you.
Any other questions regarding to swap shop stickers? Seeing none, we'll move on to tires. The current fee, tires up to 17-inch rim diameter is $2.50 per tire. We're recommending doubling that this year to $5 per tire. And with regards to tires over 17-inch rim diameter and up to 26-inch diameter, current fee is $10. We're recommending a $5 increase to $15 per tire. Any questions on those proposed changes? Mattresses and box springs. Well documented, you recall a few months ago, we had an issue with regards to mattresses and box springs. Peter McConerty, the DPW Director, working with his staff, has come up with a revised schedule under the kind of subcategory of bulky items, mattresses, box springs, sofas, and upholstered chairs, going from $20 each to $35 each. We feel this puts us more in line with some of the surrounding communities and will be kind of a disincentive for people to use the Falmouth facility. Any questions with regards to that? Electronic waste, computer monitors, CRT screens, TVs, et cetera. This has been moved, proposed to be moved this year from mattresses and box spring category into its own subcategory. $20 each. We're recommending that fee stay the same at $20 per item. Any questions? And lastly, under the Waste Management Facility permits, we have propane tanks, currently $5 per tank, 40-pound tank maximum. We're proposing to increase that to $15 per tank, again, that 40-pound tank maximum. Any questions with regards to that? Moving along to the wastewater system, I wanted to mention, we actually have, and this is a little bit further down the road, but Amy Lowell, our wastewater superintendent extraordinaire, there's Amy. Amy, do you want to talk about the sewer privilege fee upfront? We're skipping down to the sewer privilege fee, but I think of all of these fees, this is probably the one that is most important to Falmouth's future going forward, and I wanted Amy here tonight to kind of explain the justification for that. Amy?
Thank you. Wastewater Superintendent, I had a couple of slides actually on the septic fee, but I don't need to go through those if you don't want to cover those. We are increasing the septic fee under this year's fee proposal, but the privilege fee is, I wanted to talk about it because it's a brand-new fee and it will be substantial for some projects. It's intended to be a reasonable, this new fee is intended to be a reasonable reflection of the cost to the town of providing sewer system capacity to accommodate additional flow from new connections or from modified land use, like redevelopment within the existing sewer area. For example, the cost of constructing, reconstructing, expanding sewer lines, pumping stations, discharge facilities, and other related facilities, or doing work to decrease infiltration or inflow into the system. The new sewer privilege fee is proposed to be $10 per gallon per day of Title V wastewater flow, and I'll explain that a bit. It's not per gallon per day forever. It's a one-time fee. The fee would apply to either a property to be connected to the sewer that abuts the sewer but that was not previously connected and was not originally assessed a betterment. That's a very small category of projects, but there are some properties that fit into that category where 20 years ago, a sewer extension was privately made, and properties may not have been required by the superintendent at the time to connect to the sewer. Therefore, when somebody comes along later who abuts that sewer and wants to connect to it, right now, the only charge that I'm able to charge is a connection fee, which is $50 for a residential property and $200 for a commercial property, $50 per unit if it's multifamily. But those costs, the fees that I have now for sewer connection fees are very small compared to, for example, a betterment fee that would have been paid under a municipal betterment project. The other category is the more statistically significant category, which is a sewered property for which redevelopment is proposed, which will increase the wastewater flow from the property. So you guys have been hearing for, going through the Flow Neutral Bylaw hearing process for years, and when properties change in use, so it's an existing sewer property, but it changes in use, so an increase in number of bedrooms, or a significant increase in number of bedrooms, or an increase in number of seats for a restaurant, or redevelopment from office to multifamily, we have granted variances, but there's been no charge, no way of charging the property owners for the cost, the impact, and the cost of that impact to the town. I'll explain that a little bit more in a moment. Flow in gallons per day will be based on the Title V factors for the existing and proposed land use for the property. So the background on how we came to this fee is the proposed fee amount and description is based on a review of sewer fees charged by other Massachusetts towns and cities. It turns out, communities name, assess, and price similar fees in many very different ways. For example, many communities charge a flat fee for a sewer connection, which can range, seriously, from $50 to $10,000 per connection, or a similar amount per amount per defined sewer unit. There are also impact fees and many other terms for fees and many other ways of doing it. There is definitely not a one-size-fits-all example. This proposed fee is most closely based on the sewer connection privilege fee that's present, that's in place in Plymouth, though Barnstable, Fall River, and Concord assess fees with similar features. I'm including a slide that shows some examples of these fees to, to give an idea of, of the magnitude of the fees in some circumstances. So these are example changes in use that would be assessed a sewer privilege fee and the, the amount that they would be assessed for that use. So for an existing restaurant that's adding 25 seats, that would add 875 gallons per day to the wastewater system of wastewater flow according to Title V. That's a conservative estimate. The total fee, a one-time fee when that increase in use occurs or is, is approved, that fee would be $8,750. If you increase to 100 seats, which has happened for some restaurants, the fee would be $35,000. Existing office building adding 3,000 square feet would be $2,250. Redevelopment on an existing multi-use property, which is an adding 25 bedrooms, would add, according to Title V factors, would add 2,500, excuse me, 20, 2,750 gallons per day to the sewer system, and the charge would be 27,500. That charge would increase to $110,000 if the property were adding, if the developer were adding 100 bedrooms. In the rare cases that a single-family home connects to the sewer and that property abuts the sewer and was not previously assessed a betterment, they would be charged for $1,400. Why to implement this now? The capacity of the wastewater system is increasingly limited. Projects, projects should be required to pay for a reasonable portion of their impact on the town's wastewater system capacity. The town will ultimately need to develop new capacity to, to make up for the capacity that is used by this growth within the existing sewer area. New watershed permit regulations have increased the required pace of wastewater project implementation. The town will need to spend more money sooner on wastewater project implementation because of compliance, in order to comply with the new regulations. Funds from sewer privilege fee collection will appropriately help fund those future projects. That's what I had for now.
Are there any questions? And Amy, if I could, and you may have stated this, I just want to make certain that the Select Board and the public is aware, if approved, these sewer privilege fees would be contained within a separate account, and as Amy mentioned, be dedicated, allocated towards future expansion enhancements of the wastewater treatment system. Just one of the, it's not going to be funds that are going to be used for any other purpose other than that capital enhancement improvement. Did I get that right?
Yes, thank you.
I have a question about the fees. Do those fees, using the Title V numbers, accurately reflect how much it costs potentially to hook up, you know, a home or, or add in new seating to a restaurant? Do you think they're somewhat accurate?
So it's, it's a reasonable number. The, the, it is less than the betterment costs have been for the most recent sewer projects, and it is, it's, it's a reasonable reflection of the cost. The, you cannot calculate an exact cost for each project, but, but yes, and it's also well within the range of the fees that are charged by other towns for similar, in a similar circumstance.
Another question. And would businesses need to pay this as they're being hooked up, or would there be an option for small businesses to pay over the course of a year, over time?
So we'd have to work out the details of that. I am not aware of a, of a delay option, but it's possible that the, that the town does have a way for that. That's a good question that I'd have to resolve.
I'd say I think this is a very good idea, and it'll finally give justice to the people in sewered areas when a 40B comes along and gets built next to them, which we've been trying to address how to equitably handle that. So I think I really appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions from the Board?
Just, and I concur with Scott Price's comment about small businesses and what the impact might be and whether there is some way to ameliorate that upfront cost over time.
Any other questions or comments?
Amy, did you have another statement you want to make?
I just wanted to clarify that the Select Board, we discuss this ahead of time internally, and the Select Board does have a policy about, regarding fee waivers, and that is a very narrow policy, and it really only applies to...
Events?
Well, no, I'm, I'm thinking of like building permit type, type fees, or, you know, town fees for, go ahead, Peter's wanting to answer this.
Just because it's something that has come up with the Board multiple times. So the, the fee waiver policy that the Select Board has adopted has a specific provision on affordable housing, so it's only available for nonprofit developers where 100% of the units are affordable.
So your question about whether if they could pay over time is one I'd have to look into, but as far as a waiver, there is only a very narrow set of circumstances in which that would apply.
Which are clearly two different things, waiver and patient architecture.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments of Ms. Lowell?
Amy, thank you for taking that out of sequence. That was a kind of a major change, so I wanted to make sure that Select Board heard that information. So I'm going to finish up the wastewater system category, Madam Chair, but the Assistant Town Manager reminded me, I was remiss, I'm going to have to go back after we finish wastewater to beach, because there's a comment I want to make with regards to the fees in beach. So if you can focus your attention on the application fee under wastewater system, current single-family residential is recommended increase from $50 to $100. Multifamily residential, based upon the number of units times 50, we're recommending, again, doubling that number of units times 100. With regards to commercial industrial, again, we're recommending doubling that fee from the current $200 to $400. The tapping fee, collection sewers, which includes saddle and labor to install but does not include excavation, we're recommending going from $200 currently to $400 in 2024. With regards to main extensions, and again, there's notes applicable to each request for connection to any of our sewer system mains installed, which is paid by the town and is not funded through any other means. Per connection, we're recommending actually deleting that category. It's currently listed as $600, we're recommending a deletion. With regards to septicage disposal, similarly, the per-thousand-gallon winter, October-through-March time period, and per-thousand-gallon summer period, April-through-September, we're also recommending deleting the current fees for both of those seasonal periods, $80 for the winter and $95 for summer. Under these proposed schedules, those fees would be deleted.
I do have a question about that one. I don't really understand that, you're just deleting it.
The justification or the rationale behind that?
Yeah. Is it something that's actually not being done?
We're replacing the fee with, I'll go to this. So the current septicage fees that we charge at the wastewater plant for haulers, septicage haulers that discharge at the plant, we have a seasonal rate, a seasonally varying rate, which is $80 per 1,000 gallons, October-through-March, $95 per 1,000 gallons, June-through-September. We're proposing to increase that, or delete the, the fees that I just listed and replace that with $105 per 1,000 gallons fee year-round.
Okay. Thank you.
If that's not clear in the fee memo, then I, I need to, I need to make sure.
It is. I just, I just kind of misstated it. It's pretty...
That's okay. So, so it's an increase in the fee, and it's going from a seasonal to a, just a flat year-round fee.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Well, I mean, what, what was the justification for having a different seasonal rate, or just more, more business?
The idea was that it, the idea was to discourage people from just pumping in the summer when, or to, and to try to spread out the septicage flow throughout the year as you, you know, that we have a lot of seasonal properties here, and the idea was to spread out the flow more over the year. It hasn't really worked that way. What we get is a spike when the fee goes down and a spike after, or in a reduction after the fee goes up, and it, and so it, it really doesn't help spread out the flow very much. And other towns in the area don't have a seasonal fee, so I think it's not helpful to us to have that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Lastly, under the wastewater system category, a septicage discharge permit, including discharge card. The current fee is $50, and this current 2023, we're recommending doubling that to $100 in 2024. So that rounds out the wastewater systems category. Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'm going to go back, like I mentioned earlier, to Beach Department. And I think I had indicated this previously in an email to the Board. Just to bring your attention, currently, under the resident taxpayer sticker, you see a current fee of $40 and a proposed fee of $40 online, and it currently says mail-in orders. That was published in the legal ad. That was a mistake, quite honestly. What I'm, what we're proposing, we're trying to incentivize folks to use the online ordering system for these beach stickers. So we're proposing for online purchases, transactions only, that fee for $40. And if you go down one line further, the resident taxpayer sticker, if they purchase it in person, in other words, at the window, or via the mail-in option, I understand that's an option that's sometimes used, either in person or mail-in, we're recommending proposing a fee of $45. So we're increasing that $5 and giving folks that use the online transaction a bit of a break to incentivize use of online, just to reduce staffing costs and whatnot associated with in-person transactions. And hopefully that makes sense to everyone. Any questions on that?
Not sure about the mail-in, though. I guess it requires the same work. You got to open it up and do it by hand manually.
Come, come to find out in talking to Town Clerk, Michael Palmer, he kind of brought this to our attention, that that does require some additional staff resources.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no questions on that, we'll go back into the schedule itself and we'll begin, recommence with Water Department. Under the subcategory of service installation fees, there's a deletion recommended. For the addition of a 500, for addition of a one, one-inch meter pit, we're recommending deleting that line and adding a $1,300 fee for a one-inch meter pit. Is that clear to everyone? Deleting one category and adding another. And our formerly acting wastewater superintendent, I saw him, and our new wastewater superintendent is here as well. Guys, let me know if I'm misrepresenting any of those.
Water.
Water, I'm sorry. Let me know if I'm misrepresenting any of those fees. Secondly, we're recommending deletion of the two-inch meter pit and adding a, a new fee of $5,500 for that same two-inch meter pit in the 2024 proposed rates. Any questions with regard to that subcategory of service installation fees? Moving on to fire hydrant use, recommending deleting what's currently listed as minimum charge for a five-inch, five-eighth inch meter, which was $50, we're recommending going to a weekly charge for that five-eighth inch meter of $80. Minimum charge for a two-inch water meter, currently in the 2023 schedule of fees, it's listed as $100, we're recommending deleting that, adding back in a new addition of a weekly charge for a two-inch meter, increasing that to $150. Any questions with regards to that subcategory of fire hydrant usage? Cross-sections, that subcategory, backflow device testing and retest, we're recommending an increase of $20, going from $65 in 2023 to $85 in 2024. Device plan approval, and this is per device, including initial testing, recommending going from $125 this year to $200 in 2024. And lastly, under that category of cross-connections, facility surveying, per-hourly charge of one hour minimum, going from $110 per hour to $140 per hour. Any questions on that? All right, moving on to the next category of fire and rescue departments, starting with a subcategory of fire prevention fees. These are all new fees being requested, proposed for fiscal, for calendar year 2024. Energy storage systems, permit inspection, a $50 proposed new fee. Mobile and temporary cooling, cooking operations, permit and inspection, again, a $50 new fee, and miscellaneous permitting, $50 fee. Any questions with regards to that?
So if a organization comes before the Board and they have some sort of event and they need to have, I don't know, a food truck or something like that, is this what the $50 would be for?
It's my understanding that would apply to mobile. Do we have anyone here from the Fire Department that can answer that question? Scanning across.
So, so my understanding, there is a new regulation that the Fire Department has to inspect the mobile food trucks, but it would be an annual for the food truck.
Okay. And so, another question, if there is a new restaurant, say, opening up, and they obviously have to go through the permit and inspection process, is that what the, the first line, energy storage systems permit and inspection is, or is that something else?
So it's for an energy storage system?
Oh, that's specifically for an energy storage system. Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Moving on to Inspection Services Department, alterations and additions for residential and commercial construction. The change with regards to certificate of inspections, currently in 2023, it's per the table in the MSBC, we're recommending 100, in 2024, $100 per establishment. Change of use occupancy, we're recommending doubling that current fee from $25 to $50. With regards to temporary structures, trailers, tents, et cetera, we're recommending going from a $50 fee to a proposed $150 fee. Tent permit inspection services, we're recommending, again, going from $50 to $150. And with regards to stoves, wood, coal, and pellet, recommending going from $50 to $150 per stove. And I believe we have somebody here from Buildings, I think Gary is here. Yeah, there's Gary. Any questions on that?
Just a question about the tent fee. What's involved with that? Is it, is it really a lot of, is it because it's electrical inspection and a tent inspection?
We have two departments that review tent applications, Fire Department and the Building Department. Then we do a preliminary site visit. If a applicant doesn't meet the qualifications for setbacks from structures and property lines, we'll do a review of that. And then we do the permitting and an inspection by both the Fire and the Building Department for the setting of the tents. It's quite a process.
It's a bit of work, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Zelinski, and then we'll go to Ms. Skalas.
Gary, when was the last time we adjusted these, right? They've been like this for a while, haven't they?
The certificate of inspections, we went by that table in CMR 780, which was in the seventh edition. Now we're moving on to the 10th edition. That was when, that's how long that's been. Change of use, we've always been 50. That was a mistake printed last year, so it's been 50. So that's not really a change. The tailor, the trailers and the tent permits, we've never gone up, and we're pretty much in line with other towns in the vicinity of us, and I don't know if any of the other towns incorporate the Fire Department for review of tents.
I appreciate it. I just know that we've been on this fee scale for quite a while. I mean, it's quite a while. It's time to...
Mr. Skalas?
Well, actually, following up on, on Mr. Zelinski's point, on, on new residential and commercial construction, is there any consideration to increasing that, that fee during your discussions? You know, how, I don't know how long it's been in place, but if it's been in place for a while, I'm wondering if it's something we should look at. I've gotten some comments from people who questioned the, the construction value that's being used for some of the, some of the certificates and the inspections, and how much the construction values are, and that maybe they're not really accurate, if you will, or I'm wondering what, what kind of review goes in when you, when you're faced with, you know, construction value and, you know, determining...
Cost of the permit is based on the construction value. It's $8 per 1,000 of construction cost.
But what diligence is going on as to what the actual construction value is that the owner or the developer is listing as the construction value, or is it just accepted in the, in the permit?
That's under, that's under my review, and many of the projects that come before me, I request a contract, a signed contract between the homeowner and the builder, and that's verification of what the cost, cost of the construction is.
How long has the $8 per 1,000 been in place, Mr. Skalas?
20 years.
Okay.
It's been there for a while. It went from six to eight, probably 18 to 20 years ago.
Maybe take a look at that.
Maybe next year.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Renshaw?
Okay, thank you, Gary. Moving on to our next category. Moving on to our next category is Marine and Environmental Services. And Madam Chair and Select Board, if you don't mind, rather than me reading through each of these subcategories, it's obviously included in your packet. Some additions and deletions, I think Greg Fraser is here from MES, I thought I saw him in the audience, to answer any questions you might have. But are there any questions? Let me start off by that, rather than me going line by line through this particular section.
Maybe we could just hear if there's any highlights from Mr. Fraser.
Okay. Is Greg in the audience? There he is.
Hi, good evening, Greg Fraser, Director of MES. Yeah, basically, the fee structures were all geared towards the power charges this year primarily, and that was to address the fact that, as you know, through the Capitol, we brought to your attention that the, all the breakers in the Marina have to be upgraded to GFIs. We estimate that to be between $80,000 and $100,000 to do that project. So that's going to take us about five years of the fee increases to recruit our investment. So we got the first allocation of money at the Capitol. We'll be going to the FY '25 budget to request additional funding to do that, and these fees will help offset that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
We commented they're all minor, marginal increases.
Agreed.
Okay, if there are no other questions regarding MES, we'll move on to the final category, which is our department, which is Police Departments. And there's one category in addition of a new fee, nuisance alarm fee, based upon three false alarm calls. When police responds to three false alarms, it would be a $50 fee assessed. Other places I've managed, I've seen this, it's pretty common. I was quite honestly surprised that it had not been put in place before, but Chief Laurie is recommending this $50 fee, again, based on three, the third false alarm call.
In the 24-hour period?
I think this is, what is the period of time? Do you recall? Anybody here from the Police Departments?
Can we find that?
Yeah, I'll have to get back to Select Board, my apologies. I don't think it's a 24-hour period, I think it's a more extended period than that, but I'll follow up and get back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Madam Chair and Board, that concludes the proposed 2024 rates. And Madam Chair, I'll defer to you, whether, at what point you want to open it up for public comments and input.
It's time now. We can certainly hear from the public on any of the fee schedules. Dr. Schneider.
Madam Chair and Select Board, Town Managers, I wanted to tell you that the Beach Committee voted unanimously not to support the $100 resident voter sticker fee. We feel very strongly that the benefit of being a local resident and paying taxes, having your cars registered here, paying excise tax here, qualifies you for getting the reduced fee to the $45 or $40. So we do not support someone renting for a period of time or coming in and claiming they are a voter, which does not have to show residency, per se, and getting a reduced fee. Someone who rents for the summer can afford, most likely to pay for a beach sticker at the non-resident rate, and that's what we feel it should be. So I'm passing on that it's the Beach Committee's request that that be eliminated and not installed as a resident slash voter sticker fee. The only other thing that I wanted to add, I hope you will support the way we're struct, offering this as a structure, and we do really like the fact that you mentioned that the mail-in does take work, and so it should be in the second category, the $45 category. I would also say that it's important, I really have a hard time about what you're doing as proposing swap shop sticker fee, because I would think our goal was to have these things go in and out of people's possession and trading them off as fast as possible. I hope a $10 fee wouldn't keep someone from going in there to try and get things that they really need when they can't afford things. And I would also say that the mattress and box spring fee for, and the couches and so on, all I could say is that my team of workers from Friends of Falmouth Dogs volunteered to do the entire area around Friends of Falmouth Dogs, down to the main road. All you need to do someday is walk along there and see why you should choose, you basically should charge nothing for people to bring those things in and get them off of the roadways. There are so many people that will avoid that fee by throwing large items off into gullies off of the road here, and it is a nightmare to try and get them out when we're doing litter cleanup. And I think Alan would tell you that he's seen plenty of it as well. So I'm just passing on, from those of us in the trenches that try and do clean up this town, I would do anything I could to make people take things to a central location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get a response on that voter sticker, resident voter sticker, the $100? What is that actually? Yeah. Do you have any...
Yeah, I think so. Maggie?
Hi, Maggie Clayton, Beach Superintendent. I was not at the meeting where the Beach Committee discussed the fees. The Assistant Beach Superintendent was present. It was the same week as town meeting. I did not hear the message that it was voted unanimously down. I will explain that under the current guidelines, there are people who are 12-month-a-year residents who pay their utilities and are registered to vote in Falmouth, who do not qualify for the resident taxpayer beach parking permit sticker rate. So they come in with the interpretation, because of the label resident taxpayer, that they are eligible for the $40 rate or $45 rate. And when we say, if you look at the eligibility rules, no, you qualify for $275. And the customer service for serving the community is, those people feel like they are treated differently than other residents of town. So the staff had proposed $100 as a median between the taxpayer benefit and the non-resident, like a three-month seasonal renter. I am happy to support how the Board votes, and I'm happy to come back to the Board with the sticker eligibility rules, if we feel that that would change the perception of who qualified for the resident rate.
I would like to do that. I would like to do that, because, I mean, these are people that are renting, they haven't even got, they don't even own a home, why would they be penalized more for being poor? Not that they're really poor, but I mean, you know, they're disadvantaged just because they're not homeowners. It's unfair.
Right. So if they come and they expect it's 40 and we say, no, it's $275, many people walk away, and us saying, register your car in Falmouth, we, that's not a process we can help them with, and we can't facilitate the RMV timeline of it not impacting their beach season. So I do have a draft of the sticker eligibility rules to share with the Beach Committee at our meeting in two and a half weeks. And once the Beach Committee sees them, I will put a memo to the Board to be on a meeting in January to review who qualifies.
So are you making a motion to hold this fee schedule, Mr. Brown?
I don't know that we need to hold it, because it would be still useful to have it there, but, and just in case, we don't know how the Committee's going to vote, or whether or not the eligibility's going to change that. Am I right about that?
We are going to be voting it tonight, so my question is, are you wanting to hold that piece of it and not vote on it?
Just that?
That's what I'm saying. Not the whole fee schedule.
I guess I would like to hold that one then.
Okay, so we, when we come to vote this, then we'll have to make a decision as whether we hold this piece of it and bring it back and approve the rest.
And Madam Chair, if I could real quickly, and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, so historically, well, certainly over the past maybe four or five years, Select Board has handled these fee, this fee hearing in different ways. I'm asking tonight that the Board consider adopting and approving these fees? But, you know, ideally, well, we want these to be effective January 1st. We've got December 18th meeting left. So there's an opportunity to delay a vote tonight if Select Board so chooses. I just, we've done it both ways in the past.
If this turns out to be the only item of concern...
If it's the only one that we're going to hold, I would like to move the rest of the schedule if there's no opposition. But what I'm hearing is opposition from the Board for this one particular piece. Am I correct?
Just that concern about that one, yeah.
It's not opposition, a question anyway.
Yeah, but you're opposing to vote it tonight. So my point is, you're opposing, voting this piece of it, but we want, we may want to move the rest of the fee schedule.
I mean, honestly, honestly, I wouldn't really mind if it was passed, because it's a reduction from $275 to 100, so it's already better for the renters. But if we could do even better, I'd like to. So I don't necessarily want to hold it, because the policy that she comes back with will supersede what's in the fee schedule, because it's going to change the, could potentially change the status of the renters' position.
And I think I'd like more information from the Committee as well, because it seems like there are two different opinions.
What do you think? Should we hold it or...
So, Madam Chair, if I might, just to clarify, so what Ms. Clayton was suggesting was that they could look at the particulars of the rules, but not changing the fee. So the Board's going to vote a fee, whether it's tonight or at a future date. It's going to require a Board vote to either create this new cat, to create the new category and to set a specific fee, right? And then the details of exactly what the terms of qualifications are, those can be left outside of the hearing to be, you know, established by a vote of the Select Board with the recommendation from the Beach Committee.
Right.
I thought there was an issue on the fee from the Beach Committee.
Right. So the, right, the Beach Committee imposed the whole, the whole new category.
Right.
But...
That's what we heard.
This arose from the fact that while we were, while the Committee was deliberating, the $275 fee came up, and the Committee was surprised that we hadn't paid attention to it previously, that renting residents are paying $275 while homeowner residents are paying 40. That was the reason for the Committee's concern. Oh, can you want to come up?
Yeah, Dr. Schneider.
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm just in front of you taking up the time, and I'm sorry. But let me just, let me just explain. A 12-month rent, okay? A 12-month renter rents a house. Let's say they live in Acton, and they rent a house down here for 12 months, because they're only going to use it occasionally in three months of the year, and they keep their excise tax up in Acton. We did not feel that that person should be entitled to what is considered a permanent resident or local resident reduction in fee. We felt that that person was choosing to own a home and have their permanent residence elsewhere and not here. And the intent of this was to give a benefit to those who consider this home. I will also bring up, so if someone can walk in and show a 12-month lease, and they have their excise tax on their car, because to get the sticker, you need a car, that's no problem. You can be a renter for 12 months, have your excise tax here, and get the, get the reduced fee for $40. You're not penalizing a renter. You're not giving the benefit to someone who owns a property elsewhere and chooses to have their excise tax elsewhere. That's the, that's where the Committee was coming from, and I hope that's more clear. So that's why we were opposed. It is not to penalize a person who rents, doesn't own, but considers this their home. Thank you.
Oh, I guess I hit it wrong. So do we want to hold this or not? I don't, I guess we don't.
I don't.
I guess not.
Okay, well, I think what we need to do is, we need to keep going through any of the other, to get public comment, to see if there are any other concerns in any other areas.
I'm going to release the hold on that for now.
Okay. And then we'll close the hearing, and we'll have further discussion amongst the Board.
Okay.
Okay? Any other public input on the proposed fee? I'm going to go to Mr. Fineran, and then certainly, Mr. Robinson.
Mark Fineran, 98 grand, have, regarding the sewer privilege fee, I paid somewhere in the neighborhood of $16,000 to hitch up to the sewer. And in the instance of my property, or one of my properties, someone three houses away from me could get the same thing for $4,500, $4,400, and they might be facing, replacing a Title V system in, you know, in the balance. And I'm never one to argue for raising anybody's taxes, rates, or whatever, but it, it strikes me as not equivalent, not fair. I mean, why should I pay 16 grand and somebody pay 4,400 for the same thing?
Thank you, Mr. Fineran. Ms. Lo, please.
To be clear, there are very few properties where this would apply for a single-family home. We are not allowing extensions or to properties without, outside the sewer area. This, this new fee only fills in a gap where a property already abuts the sewer system but is not connected. An abatement wasn't assessed, because this extension was originally a private extension. So it was not, there was no abatement assessed, because it wasn't a town project. This new fee will not allow expansion in the area adjacent to, to any of the existing sewer properties. It only applies to properties that already abut the sewer system, and there are a handful of properties to which that applies. That portion of it applies. The major application of this new fee is to redevelopment that increases flow.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
I'd like to respond to and address the comment made by Barbara Schneider with regard to the $10 fee. We do recognize that there are members of our community that even a $10 fee to utilize a swap shop is a significant amount. And what we'd like, we'd like to think, or we'd like to hope, that if, that there would be some ability for an individual or family to get a waiver, that if they came to the town clerk and said, you know, this $10 fee really is important, is significant to me, that they could use the swap shop without having to pay the, the fee on it for the course of the year, because we do want people to come who particularly are in need and want to be able to, you know, fill a home, a new home, with spatulas and tableware and all sorts of things. And that's what the swap shop is very able to do.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the fee schedule? The proposed fee schedule?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, and I don't mean to put Peter on the spot, but Peter, could you do me a favor? Could you address the mattress question, if you don't mind?
Thank you.
Yeah, Peter McConity, Director of Public Works. So there's different theories on the mattresses. We do find them on the side of the road. We have our Highway Superintendent here tonight. Over the years, when we have increased our fees for the mattresses, it doesn't make big diff, if there's a mat, someone's going to throw a mattress on the side of the road. They're going to throw the mattress on the side of the road, whether it's going to cost another $10 or not. The 30, what, currently, we've been charging $20, and $20 does not cover the mattress fee. Born is up to 40 to 60, depending on if it's a, if it's a twin or a, or a queen or a king. So we're just looking to recover our costs. I know that according with Jim Grady, our Highway Superintendent, over the past several months, we are, we have containers up there that hold 40 to 50 mattresses, and we, that those are getting collected multiple times per month, three to four containers a month. We're taking in a lot of mattresses. So if that fee was brought down to zero, that would be a big, that would be a big fee impact on Public Works. So we're looking to bring the mattresses just up to cover the cost for the, for the mattress structure.
Thank you. Any other comments on the proposed fee schedule? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So...
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the Board.
I think all my questions, questions have been answered.
Madam Chair, I'm making a motion to approve the fee schedule as proposed.
A second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the fee schedule. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
So, Madam Chair, could I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So that vote included all of the fees as presented, including the new $100 fee?
Mr. Brown withdrew, withdrew his...
Retrued the hold.
Yes, he did.
As proposed.
No one helped, as proposed. Yep. He withdrew. Okay, we will move on to business. Authorized grant application for a feasibility assessment of beach and dune nourishment along Surf Drive. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're running behind, so I'll try to go through this relatively quickly. As you all know, Surf Drive has been identified as one of the areas most vulnerable to the impacts of sea level rise and storm damage. Beach and dune nourishment along Surf Drive was a recommendation in the 2020 Coastal Resiliency Planning for the Surf Drive Area Study conducted by the Woods Hole Group. As you may recall, this study considered three different sections of Surf Drive. Public and Wui owned beach section fronting the Trunk River and Bike Path, known as Illustrated Area A in your packets. Mixed ownership from west of Mill Road to Surf Drive, Bike Path Crossing, Area B indicated in your packet. And public beach section from end of Shore Street to the west of Mill Road, Area C in your packets. Madam Chair and Select Board, the goal of beach and dune nourishment projects are to add resiliency to Surf Drive roadway, utility infrastructure, existing private properties, natural resources, as well as our recreational beaches. The study would evaluate conceptual alternatives for beach and dune nourishment in all of the sites and would include cost estimates for final design, permitting, and construction. Public outreach and pre-application meetings with the regulatory agencies would also be included in this proposal. Results of the feasibility study would then be used by the town to make better informed decisions on whether to proceed with beach nourishment. The grant requires a twenty-five percent cash or in-kind match from the town. Based on an estimated project cost of eighty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the town match would be in the range of twenty thousand to thirty-seven thousand five hundred. If this grant is successful, a capital request for this match would be submitted for the November twenty twenty-four town meeting. Limited staff support, we estimate, would be required to carry out the feasibility study. Staff would provide some existing data, document in-kind contributions to the project, and make logistical arrangements for the public meetings that would be required to be held. We'd be asking the Select Board for approval at a future meeting to apply for the CZM for a grant for Phase Two of a coastal resiliency grant for Eel River Inlet Widening. This widening project seeks to address hazardous navigation, shoaling, water quality erosion of western shoreline, and coastal resiliency. To date, we've not determined whether one is a higher priority than the other and barring any clear priority ranking, we suggest both applications ultimately be submitted. Madam Chair and Select Board, it's my recommendation the Select Board authorize submission of this grant application as presented. The grant represents an opportunity to move forward with one of the board's strategic priorities, management of coastal natural resources and infrastructure in a much more effect, cost-effective manner by leveraging federal funds. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer this.
Any questions from the board?
Happy to see it moving forward.
Um, if there's no discussion, I have a motion to authorize submission of this grant application as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks to the Beach Committee for moving that forward.
For moving it. Okay, we'll move on to update of notices of intent to apply for watershed permits. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amy is here and I think she's got a short PowerPoint presentation to give you.
Thank you. As background, new Title V and watershed permit regulations became effective in July of this year. In August of this year, I made a presentation to the board and in a separate meeting, the board voted to, by January seventh of 2024, file notices of intent to apply for watershed permits for all Falmouth watersheds that were designated nitrogen-sensitive areas. Total maximum daily load limits have been set by the state for fourteen of the town's coastal ponds. Therefore, watersheds to these ponds are designated nitrogen-sensitive areas and watershed permit applications have to be filed and permits issued for these watersheds by July of 2030. So I wanted to just update, there's no, there's no vote or anything required today, but I wanted to update the board on the, the grouping and the timing of proposed watershed permit of filing, watershed permit application filing as, as described in the notices of intent. The notice of intent form is a very simple online form to which you have, the town has to attach a proposed schedule for filing watershed permits. And a separate notice of intent will have to be filed for each watershed. The notice of intent, submitting the notices of intent will suspend the requirement to upgrade septic systems to denitrifying or IA technology under the new Title V recommendations as we discussed back in August. The, I, we, I had originally proposed filing before January seventh of 2024 because that was when the DEP's new requirements were going to take effect for new construction. The IA upgrade recommendations were, or requirements were going to come into effect for new construction. The ta, state recently extended that deadline for IA upgrade, upgrade requirement under new construction to July of 2024. But I don't see a reason to delay filing notices of intent based on the board's previous vote. I wanted to acknowledge that deadline changed, but there's no reason to change the earlier vote. As far as planned grouping of watershed permits, we'll file a notice of intent for each watershed, but at this point, we're envisioning grouping the watersheds into four groups for the purposes of watershed permitting. And the grouping is based primarily on the amount of planning and evaluation that's been conducted to date for the watersheds. So, for example, Little Pond and Great Pond are first because we already have targeted watershed management plans approved for those watersheds. And there's more detail in the memo that I provided in advance of this meeting about the groupings and the, and the schedule proposed for each. But the schedules basically show watershed permit applications spread out over four years in order to spread out the effort of planning, i.e. preparation of the watershed management plans that are required for the permit applications and the implementation and the follow-up reporting. Once we file the watershed permits, we're going to have to report on the activity under those permits every five years. So this filing them, spreading the filing out over four years spreads out the, the permit compliance monitor, uh, reporting. This is a summary of what's in your packet as far as the grouping and the timing. As I said, we're spreading out the, the planned watershed permit applications over four years among these four groups. Little Pond and Great Pond first, then the next ponds to the east of Little Pond and Great Pond, for which we have done a, a, a significant amount of evaluation but for which we do not have watershed management plans in place. Group C, the third group is Oyster Pond, Falmouth Harbor, and West Falmouth Harbor. And Group D is Wild Harbor, McGansett Harbor, Fiddler's Cove, Rans Canal, Quissett Harbor. That last group is, um, we have not done wastewater management plans, any, any significant wastewater management planning yet for those ponds. And they have, they require less nitrogen removal in order to meet their total maximum daily loads. Wild Harbor is the only one of that Group D group that we envision potentially requiring additional sewerin to meet its limit. To be clear, the town can submit the application sooner than the schedule I just outlined if, if the town wishes to. This is not a commitment to spread it out over four years. This proposed schedule is intended to allow more than enough time to complete the tasks. The town can always elect to accomplish these tasks sooner and submit the permit applications earlier and even in a different grouping than listed, than listed. However, if the towns were to miss the deadlines in the notice of intent, then the DP has the authority to revert back to the IA upgrade requirements for new construction and to the five-year timeframe. So, so we're giving ourselves time in the notices of intent, but if we want to do it more quickly, we can certainly do that. And that's the end of that. I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions from the board? Thank you for that update. I appreciate it and I think we need to follow your lead on the filing. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. We will move into the Fire Rescue Department Staffing Plan Presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've asked Chief Smith to be present tonight to give a short, about a ten-minute presentation. As he's coming up to the podium, I just want to remind the Select Board of the purpose. We're here tonight to review some of the current staffing trends that we're seeing within Fire Rescue Department and also some of the impacts with regards to West Falmouth Fire Station, Station Four, and to propose some recommendations to address staffing concerns at Station Four in West Falmouth. As requested, we're prevent, we're providing this current staffing information and efforts to hire additional staff. We wanted to get the Select Board up to speed on the great work that Chief Smith and his staff are doing, working in conjunction with HR, trying to get the staffing numbers filled, the override positions filled as quickly as possible. And we're going to look at some of the impacts and trending again with regards to staffing challenges that we've seen. With that, Chief Smith, if you're ready to roll, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. First off, thank you for the, for the support of the fee increases from our particular department. Also wanted to introduce Deputy Thrasher who's joining me this evening as we present this staffing update to the board and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to, to provide this presentation to, to all. Let's see. There we go. All right. So I wanted to try and go through this as best as possible to answer some of the questions or issues that have been raised and kind of give an explanation for everybody at, and on the board to understand our update based on all of the hiring practices and activity that's been undergoing right now. So I wanted to go over a few things, some definitions and such, and I hope to, you know, get this all completed and not go over the ten-minute time frame. So, just wanted to go over a couple of things. First, staffing is comprised of line personnel and staff. Our line personnel are those that are on the, you know, on the floor as we call it. Those are the, those are the personnel that respond to the calls, fire EMS related, and they, they man the shifts at the beginning of the day. Our staff personnel are assigned to specialty positions or involved in administrative roles within the department. Prior to the 2023 override, we had seventy-eight line personnel that were budgeted. And that includes, and we've discussed it in the past, the shift commander, lieutenant, and firefighters that comprise the, the line personnel. With the successful override this, this past spring, we now have ninety-two line personnel that are budgeted. And this is what we've been working on trying to hire to bring us up and get that staffing level up higher. So, as was mentioned by the town manager, we have an ongoing hiring process that's been underway since July of 2023. After the revocation from civil service, we had to do a little bit of homework on our part because civil service always guided us in, in obtaining qualified applicants, those that took the civil service exams that were at the state level. And since that revocation, we had to come up with our own hiring process. And that was, we needed HR to assist us in getting all of the paperwork done, the applications, put it online so that was available to any qualified or interested applicants. So since July, we've also started to conduct interviews after we started to get a, a, a good response to some of our applications. So, we currently, as, as listed here, we have interviews and offers of employment accepted or pending to fill the approved new budgeted positions from the override and the current vacancies also that we will always have in our department on a yearly basis just due to attrition or other reasons, whether it's a resignation or retirement. We still have to hire for those positions which are currently budgeted. Just to review the, where the current and future staffing is within our department. So, obviously Headquarters Station is, is in the, the hub of the town. We have six personnel at a minimum that are at this station, shift commander or lieutenant, and four firefighters. It's the most active station. We have an engine, a ladder, ambulance, the medic response vehicle, and multiple other exal, uh, auxiliary vehicles that are stationed at the, at this particular station. The Woods Hole Fire Station, Station Two, has two personnel, has an ambulance and an engine assigned. North Falmouth, also two personnel, also has an engine and an ambulance assigned to that station. The West Falmouth Station, Station Four, has two personnel and one engine. It's a single base station. East Falmouth, Station Five, has four personnel. That was increased in twenty, in July of 2020. We have four personnel, one lieutenant, and three firefighters that comprise the staffing at that particular station. We have an engine and ambulance, a brush breaker, and that's where we house our spare ambulance and our spare engine when needed if we run into mechanical issues. And as we know, the Hatchville Station, Station Six, is, is slated for completion by the summer or the fall of 2024. And at a minimum, we'd need two firefighters and we plan to put an engine and an ambulance at that particular station when we open it. So currently, start of shift staffing, it's a contractual minimum. Needed for the five stations, we require sixteen personnel to staff all fi, uh, five stations. And in the future, start of shift staffing at a minimum needed for six stations will require eighteen personnel.
Can I, may I ask a question?
Sure, can I, how do I go back for you to just? I got it, I got it. Okay.
It's those arrows.
I'm sorry.
So Headquarters, six personnel, a shift commander, a lieutenant, four firefighters. Does the lieutenant respond?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm just trying to think of two in and two out, right? So the, does the shift commander respond?
Shift commander is responsible for the overall operations of, of all five stations. And the lieutenant is responsible, you know, if we look at a span of control within that particular station, he oversees the activity of the four firefighters. He responds in the, in the fire engine. He could also respond in the ladder if needed and if needed, they respond to medical and fire calls. So the, the lieutenant is a very active part of the shift complement.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
Before you go off that, I'm going to piggyback off that. When you identified that first line item at Main Station, you said that personnel at a minimum. What is it at a maximum when it's fully staffed at, at Headquarters?
We, we don't have a particular number. It's all based on how many people we have at the start of the shift, so.
Get ballpark on.
We could have eight at a maximum.
Thank you.
Also, you just have to remember too, we're limited on, on living space within our station. Back in two thousand and two, the station was designed for, you know, a certain complement of personnel. And as we continue to add personnel, we've had to make additions to the stations to accommodate some of our personnel. East Falmouth was only, used to only have two bedrooms and we had to make two additional bedrooms. So Headquarters is starting to get on that bubble too, but we're, we're, we're able to accommodate it. But as, as everything continues to grow, we might have to address that as well.
How many, how many bedrooms are there at Headquarters?
So, we had our old alarm room that was on the, on the first floor. We took that alarm room and obviously Dispatch Services went over to the police station. We took that room, we removed all of the equipment and we made it into another bedroom. And we have, we have three additional beds that we put in there. We actually put Murphy beds in, in this particular room so that we could accommodate our extra personnel. But as we continue to grow right now, so we have at least ten beds available. And sometimes those beds, you know, during storms and such might be, you know, utilized as well, but we have individual rooms and, you know, it, you know, right now, we haven't, you know, firefighters have single occupancy for those bedrooms.
So there's seven bedrooms and a room with three?
So, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine beds in the, in the fire, on the fire side where the fire personnel work, which is the, the firefighters and the lieutenants and the captain has a bed. So, we have.
So they're not necessarily bedrooms, they're just?
No, they're, they're, we have one bedroom that has two, two beds, two rooms that have two beds and the rest are all single and they're just single occupancy.
Okay.
All right. So, current staffing of the seventy-eight line, uh, line budgeted personnel, we have nineteen the personnel, nineteen to twenty personnel that are assigned per shift. A sixteen-person minimum at the start of the shift is needed to staff all stations and we'll continue to remind everybody about that because it's important. But the daily number of firefighters are, you know, our levels at the beginning each day are affected by either long or short-term injury or, or just regular sick leave, vacation, personal time. Sick leave requests generally occur prior to the shift, start of the shift, military or administrative leave, and it's, it's ongoing. And the more personnel we have, the more, you know, we're going to see personnel taken time off. And unfortunately, in, in how, you know, we currently operate, overtime is frequently needed to fill daily shift openings and mandatory shifts are common, are common. And that's just based on our current. our current numbers that we're going to continue to review here. So anticipated staffing. So when we talk about staffing, we talk in terms of qualifications and those that are able to fill the shift staffing strength. So if, for instance, if on this first line, we have three recent graduates from the Mass Fire Academy, they graduated at the end of November, they have to undergo orientation and training. And as a result, we expect their qualifications to be completed by February or March. It generally takes two to three months for somebody to be qualified, to be counted as shift strength. So even though we have these three personnel that are out of the academy, they're not counted as part of the daily shift staffing. We have an additional seven personnel that actually started work today. Today was their first day of orientation. We start them about a month early so that we can start to get them orientated to the department, understand and get familiarized with the department. They still have to go through a 10-week training program, but this allows them to get a little bit of, you know, feel of the department, and when they come back, they can, they're not lost. They're coming back, and we're going to continue more vigorous training with them until they become qualified. So we anticipate that this group will be qualified by June or July of 2024. Following that, a month later, we have six additional personnel that are going to be attending recruit training as well. And upon successful graduation in May of 2024, we anticipate them to be about August or September before we see them qualified. I also have two other personnel that we have offered jobs to, and they currently have academy certification, so we don't have to send them to the academy. They're going to come to the department and go through our regular training program. So we see that as a shorter training process, but we anticipate by the time they start in January, February, that they're going to be ready to go by April or May of 2024. So we look at this as an anticipated number of qualified staffing of 18 by September of 2024. And again, we have other current vacancies that are pending, or current vacancies, or we have pending academy dates for others that we have started to administratively process, and that totals five. So there's at least 23 personnel that are going to be, you know, going through the qualification period after training, and if everybody's successful, 23 personnel makes up an entire shift. If we take the current budgeted amount of personnel that we have, then four divided into, that's 23 per shift. This is an entire shift that we're working to establish. So as we continue to see these numbers, you know, or these personnel go through training, we're going to see a significant improvement with our staffing levels. Just to review how we do things in the department, you know, and I wanted to just explain the deployment of resources during a particular shift. So we have a minimum start of shift staffing that was increased from 14 to 16 in December of last year, and that's required to staff all stations. We require a minimum of two personnel per engine or ambulance. It's contractual language, and also the chief is also allowed to mandate, to meet, to have overtime to meet this 16 firefighter at start of shift staffing, and this is a cycle that we look at every day. We also included voluntary overtime that was being offered to achieve a 17 firefighter start of shift complement, and this is to improve staffing, and it allows us to assign that additional personnel to Headquarters where it's the most active and the most equipment, and we certainly can use more manpower there as well, and it's been very helpful. And if anything happens during the day, you know, that personnel is able to be utilized to augment other stations. But as we've seen since December of last year, personnel are more apt to take night shifts than they are day shifts. There's just a lot going on. These families, personnel might be getting off at the end of their shift, they're not willing to work because they've got family obligations or there's something going on. So we usually see the 17th person helping us at night with increased staffing. All stations are assigned as backup to other districts as needed. So multiple fire or EMS responses can have many district resources being used in one part of town versus another. Before we came here tonight, there was four calls simultaneously. One was a cardiac arrest, one was a partial airway obstruction, and one was a stroke and a person that fell, and it was all within a 20-minute span of time. So, and everybody was crisscrossing across the town. That's just the nature of how, you know, our calls come in. For those districts with only two personnel, specifically Station Two, Three, and Four, which would be Woods Hole, North Falmouth, and West Falmouth, if they're on a call, then the station's unavailable for response until they report back in service or upon return from a call where they clean up their equipment and they get ready for the next call. With regards to West Falmouth, we have current staffing minimum is noted of 16, and this ensures that we have all of our stations, including the West Falmouth Station, staffed at the start of the shift. Each shift starts at 7:00 AM in the morning. There's two shifts during the day. It's a 24-hour period, 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. So personnel report to duty, and they're there for the duration, they're on duty for 24 hours. Occasionally, the West Falmouth Station's not staffed when one of the 16 assigned personnel shift-wide leaves mid-shift, day or night, and this could be as a result of illness or an injury. The shift commander and the deputy evaluates where the opening is, and in some instances, personnel are reassigned from West Falmouth, and that station is temporarily unstaffed. Attempts are made through requests via radio or text to our off-duty personnel to see if they're interested in returning for coverage. If no one's willing to work, factors such as time, the timeframe involved, call volume are considered before personnel from West Falmouth are reassigned. And again, you know, in, you know, reviewing, you know, the impacts that we obviously have on occasion with West Falmouth, you know, the shift commander and the deputy work very closely together to make sure that we're trying to do the best for our operations in the department. You know, and one of the things that we would note, that with this particular station, this particular month, we only had two hours where we didn't have any staffing at that station. Otherwise, it's staffed at the start of the day, every single day, since we had the improved staffing as of going from 14 to 16 in December. In comparison, in November of 2022, we had 16 shifts that weren't filled in one month at that station. So the point being is that we are seeing, you know, increased improvement with our staffing, and these are infrequent at best. It happens, but we are working to ensure that we have coverage in all of our stations so that we can have town-wide services. The other thing is with the advent of the sixth station coming online next year, we can't guarantee that we may need to, you know, that we can't guarantee that we might not have to reevaluate infrequent issues related to West Falmouth, but it's fair to say that we should see fewer instances when we are below 18 as our staffing improves than today with the current fire station. And again, we are very cognizant and obviously want to make sure that we're having our stations staffed and our personnel, you know, working and healthy throughout the day. All right. Question that was raised is how to improve coverage in that particular station. Why not assign one of our fire inspectors or EMS supervisor? They're considered staff personnel. They work at the station. At Headquarters, up on the second floor, they're administrative or involved in specialty work. They work a 40-hour work week, and they do not work nights or weekends. Inspectors in the Fire Prevention Division play an important role in preventing fire, loss of property, and loss of life. They have weekly and daily inspections, plan reviews, et cetera. Require many appointments with civilians and business owners, realtors, and are scheduled weeks in advance, and inspectors are frequently out of the office. It's a very robust and very active fire prevention division. Staff are not considered part of the daily staffing as well. The EMS supervisor has extensive duties for oversight.
Hold on, Chief, for a second. Madam Chair, who makes that determination? Your last statement. Repeat your last statement.
Staff are not considered as part of the daily shift staffing.
Who considers that? You?
It's contractual. Line personnel are assigned at the beginning of the day, and they make up the shift staffing. Staff aren't included in that.
So that's union contract? That's language? That's what dictates that?
Yep. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The EMS supervisor has extensive duties for oversight of active EMS services, which requires significant administrative oversight, resupply, meetings, state reports, quality assurance, ambulance billing, review, and training of all department personnel. He, the bulk of our activity is medical responses, so he has a very extensive amount of work that he has to complete throughout the day. And again, you know, they're very, very active. Another question.
How many EMS supervisors are there, and how many of your fire inspectors do you have?
We have one fire prevention officer. He's assigned, he oversees the two fire inspectors, and we have one EMS supervisor.
Thank you.
All right. Let me go to previous. All right. Another question, why not assign a deputy fire chief? Deputy fire chief is part of the command staff of the department. They're responsible for the overall daily administrative and operational oversight and required to respond to all major incidents and incident scene management. They act on behalf of the fire chief when he's not available, or her, depending on how the department shapes up in the years to come. Work four 12-hour shifts and rotate duty on a four-on-four-off schedule in our on-call at night. They're not considered as part of the daily staffing configuration as well. They direct and interact with the shift commanders. They conduct payroll, report reviews, deal with the public collateral functions, which are secondary oversight responsibilities for them. They oversee the equipment needs, purchasing, new personnel, training, design and specifications for new apparatus, marine equipment, state, data reporting, attendance, all leave requests, and also respond to emergencies that would require a chief officer to be on site. They also field many calls and work with the public, as stated, and they also attend meetings, and the daily work is time-consuming with their regular workday, and they're not considered as part of the shift staffing, as I noted. Why not assign a firefighter from Headquarters to West Falmouth? So Headquarters, again, responds to the most calls and has critical infrastructure in the center of the town. That staffing would, that requires the staffing assigned to the station. Hospital, schools, nursing homes, housing, Main Street, you know, a very active hub in this particular town. And when we're busy, those personnel support other activity in town. So if the ambulance goes out and there's only six people there, we drop down to four. If there's another medical call in that district, the engine or the ambulance might go on, it continues to drop down our staffing. They're very active, and they're, you know, we need, you know, the numbers to help to respond to the call volume that we have at this particular station, which is generally about 50% of the calls in town. In some instances, we have reassigned personnel from Headquarters to where the opening occurred to avoid reduced staffing in West Falmouth. It's not preferred to reduce from six personnel to five because of the call volume and the equipment and resources requiring additional personnel, i.e., the ladder has specialty equipment for technical rescue. A few years ago, we combined two pieces of apparatus, so it functions as a ladder, it structure fires, and it has all the technical equipment needed for rescue, so motor vehicle crashes, construction site accidents, any type of other things that require a lot of our equipment. It's manpower-intensive as well, and, you know, we pride ourselves in having that equipment available to help out. Again, you know, we have worked to try and, you know, utilize this additional person when needed. And again, we try to look at what's going on at any particular time during the day, any time during the shift, and as the call volume increases, like this evening, when we had four calls in a row, then our manpower is reduced because everybody's committed on calls. So on any busy day, we can see all of our stations empty. Staff continue to evaluate the current and ongoing emergencies, and other responses that need our attention might include needing mutual aid from our neighboring towns. You know, so we are very, you know, focused on trying to ensure that we're providing the best services we can with the resources that we have. So.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Chief, at the start of your presentation, you thanked us for increasing your fee structure, right? Who do you think pays that fee structure?
Taxpayers.
Yeah. Taxpayers at West Falmouth?
Yes.
All right. Do you think you're doing a good job there in West Falmouth, honestly? Is this the biggest issue that you think of when it comes to? Do you feel like this board supports the fire department in everything they ask for?
I believe that the board has been very supportive of the department.
And do you think we're all in on you guys?
I don't understand what that question is.
Support of us?
That you all support us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm asking you to support us and figure this out in West Falmouth personally.
Okay.
All right. I can't tell you the amount of constituents I get, I don't know about the rest of the board members. This is their major topic there, and they should be treated, no matter how we have to get it done, equal to everyone else. That mother or that elderly person that comes around the corner and sees that orange sticker on the door doesn't care about what you're showing us right now. They are just hoping and praying that that thing's open, and that's what's driving my displeasure and my frustration with this whole process. These people feel like they're getting singled out because of statistics. And I'm asking you to do your best with your command staff personally to figure this out.
And we have.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Go ahead.
And Vice Chairman Zelensky, I understand the frustration. I've been here, it's going on six months now. Back on October 16th, the entire select board unanimously voted to amend that strategic priority with regards to West Falmouth Station. Chief Smith and I had a conversation. I'm asking you this tonight, and I know it's frustrating. The direction has been given to me. My job is to supervise and manage with, in conjunction with the Assistant Town Manager, the department heads the staff. I understand the frustration, I do. Hold my feet to the fire, and I'm not going to give it a timeline, I've been here six months. Hold my feet to the fire to get this thing solved. Working with Chief Smith, with the deputies, with his command staff, I'm confident, and we've got some suggestions, some proposed solutions that we're going to look at, the last couple of slides, actually. I understand the frustration, I do. You hired me to run the day-to-day activities of this town. Allow me that opportunity to work with Chief Smith, his deputies, and the assistant to come up with a solution that's viable and works and addresses this concern and this frustration that I've heard loud and clear with regards to Station Four.
And I'll stay in my lane.
And I think your point is well-taken, that this board supervises you, and we have a policy, and that you need to make sure that the policy is carried out.
Thank you.
Just one comment. I wonder, in fairness, while we are short-staffed, should we maybe take turns with Woods Hole and North Falmouth or East Falmouth? Maybe there should be some sharing of this instead of it always being West Falmouth? Just a thought.
The Woods Hole Station has an ambulance assigned to it, and it provides the backup to Headquarters. So when Headquarters ambulance is not available, then the Woods Hole ambulance, depending on where it is in the district, responds and will take EMS calls. North Falmouth does the same thing, and East Falmouth does the same thing. We, you know, we utilize our dispatching personnel to utilize CAD or computer aided dispatch. We have run cards that are assigned to all the different, that lay out all the districts and the responses, whether it's a fire call or an EMS call. And it gets complicated at times. And I'm not dismissing anything that's been said here tonight. In fact, you know, this is a topic of discussion for us on a regular basis, and we're doing what we can with the resources we have. And the support from the community, the support from the board, you know, working with both Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager is helping to shape how our department is moving in a positive direction based on the amount of manpower that we're starting to get in staffing. It takes a little bit of time, and I understand everybody's frustrations. We too don't want to see any stations unstaffed. And regardless of comments regarding data and, you know, statistics and things, we need to use those to kind of give us a understanding of what we can do at that particular time with our resources. And there have been many times, many times where we've avoided, we've had many times where we've avoided the closure of that station in the last several months because we have heard how, you know, the concerns. But not only that, because it's a topic of discussion, but our staffing, as it increases from people that have been out injured or we've been able to hire for these particular, you know, vacancies, that allows us to bolster our shifts. And when that happens, then we have more personnel available at the beginning of the day. And when that happens, then we have more personnel available at the beginning of the day. As I stated, the West Falmouth Station is staffed every day at the beginning of the shift. We've run into some, some issues with, with staffing, and we are working. So as, as the fire chief, this, this completely falls on me, and we're working, and I understand. And, you know, we hopefully can offer some solutions and suggestions and to continue to make improvements so that our stations are staffed. But understand that these stations are utilized townwide. So the West Falmouth Station could go to Woods Hole tomorrow on a call. The North Falmouth Station went to East Falmouth this evening. We went to Woods Hole from, from headquarters on another call. So this is the nature of our business, that we manage it, and we have a, we have a very professional staff that, that ensures that we're meeting our obligation in the community regardless. So anyways, solutions.
Mr. Muscally?
Oh, Bob, how are you?
Good, Chief. So we appreciate your efforts with respect to staffing and the improvements you're making, but we're also hearing that firefighters are leaving the department. And I'm just, I think, two or three recently, and we're just wondering if, if you have any answer for us as to why that might be happening? Whether exit interviews are performed and how they're performed, who does them? If you could give us a little insight on that.
Sure, I can articulate that. So we do conduct exit interviews for all our personnel. And I can honestly tell you that the personnel that are leaving are generally going back to, you know, to their home of origin or the town of origin or the area of origin. And some of it has to do with family obligations, work related to their families, spouses, their, their families, you know, they haven't families. It happens, and, you know, we have a very young staff, and some are, are, have left the department. But in every single interview, and deputies can wholeheartedly agree, even in our interviews, we have heard nothing but positive things about our department. People want to come to this town to work. Now, that being said, it is a very expensive place to live. I just heard the other day that the stats on real estate, it's $811,000 for a home, you know, that was, you know, through the deeds at the county. So it's a very expensive place to live. A lot of our personnel live over the bridge. They travel back and forth to work every day. So we do see once in a while that somebody might leave because they don't have to travel as far anymore. We have a 30-mile radius for personnel, and some people leave. But in all of our exit interviews, we've had nothing but positive comments. Command staff, training, the, the call volume, which for some is, is a good thing. Some people like to be busy, some people, it's too busy. But we have seen a significant draw to our department. We've had over 100 applicants for this department. And I think that says something, and we have a very solid reputation with all the other departments on the Cape. And, you know, and I think we have a lot to offer, and, and, you know, we have a very, like I said.
I think you do, and I think you train them very well. The, the, the key is to keep them and try not to lose them, I know, you know that. Who conducts the exit interviews?
Generally myself or the, or the deputies.
So town HR has not, no?
We haven't had, you know, she's very busy. So she hasn't had the ability to do that. We take care of that, but we generally give her an update. And the other part of it is, is that, as you well can imagine, you know, there are other factors. There's, you know, pay is, is also an issue for some. Other departments might offer more, they might consider going to those departments. And that's, you know, again, that's an ongoing, you know, you know, process with the town in, in, in the union. But that is a factor, but it's not something that I've heard that much in our exit interviews. But it is a factor. Pay is definitely a factor for personnel, especially if they, the high cost of living down here, and I understand it, I understand it. And I want to see our personnel supported and get the biggest raises they can and have all the assistance they can, benefits and such, and give them a good reason to, to check off not to leave. But we have lost personnel in, in, in the last couple of months. So some of the solutions and suggestions that we wanted to offer is we, you know, one, we can continue to follow the current policy of evaluating the midship staffing shortage and making informed decisions to reassign personnel until we get back to 16 personnel. We put out a call, whether it goes out over the radio, whether it goes out through texts, but we make a concerted effort to try and get personnel to return to work. The other day, when, when we had somebody leave soon after they got to work, we were able to fill it within two hours and cover the station. So again, West Falmouth was covered. We would offer to seek, to negotiate an increase in minimum staffing as soon as possible to reduce further impacts, not only in West Falmouth, but department-wide. Look to provide incentives for those who are impacted by the current staffing challenges. As I noted, we do, you know, not only do we have frequent overtime usage, part of that frequent overtime usage is used for mandated staffing. To, so if we fall below the 16-man minimum at the start of the shift, we have to hold people over. And that's not a very popular thing either, and that is a factor as well when people are being held. This month, it was less. So we're, we're getting people back that were on sick leave, long-term leave, and they're coming back FMLA as well. And as they return to work, then our staffing gets strengthened, and we have less issues related to the start of the shift staffing.
Chief, can I interrupt you for a second? We're already 25 minutes past, but select, I just want you, I want you to, forgive me, I can't go into a lot of details, but it's the third bullet point that Chief Smith, Peter, and the deputies and I are going to work on. I think this is, is likely going to be one of the solutions that maybe addresses this. In the interim period before we can get, would you say September of '24?
Sure.
I don't want to throw a date out, but until we get fully staffed, once we get fully staffed, fill these positions. Correct me if I'm wrong. We're going to be a much better position, you said, said that earlier. In the meantime, to address these concerns with regards to Station 4, I think it's that third bullet that I'm really going to press and work with Chief Smith and his deputies to.
And I agree, and hence, you know, we, we're making that as part of our solutions and suggestions. Last one, and I know it's not popular, is to continue to add staffing to the budget. I know Peter shot me down when I was talking about it the other day, but I will continue to ask for, you know, increased staffing to improve our public safety. I know we're going to end up competing with Chief Laurie, but I will continue to, to advocate for our department. In summary, you know, I, again, it gets back to, to, to what was mentioned. We, we appreciate the investment in the fire department, and we are grateful for all that the fire, that the community has made towards supporting our department over the last several years. We've, we've had 30 additional positions added to the fire department since 2017. But along with that, our call volumes increased, our, the, the, the need to respond in the community has grown. And every time we have any attritional deficits, it affects our daily staffing. But 30 positions is what has been funded to support the department. Level of fire service and emergency medical protection is better now than it was a few years ago when the minimum staffing was only 10. So it's only three years ago that we had a 10-man minimum and relied on callback for people to come back to the station. Firefighter safety is much better now with a two-man minimum for, for each ambulance and engine. At one point, there was one person that was assigned to a particular fire truck, in particularly in the West Falmouth and Woods Hole. When budgeted positions are filled, the minimum staffing can be increased to 18 firefighters, and six stations will be staffed on a regular basis. Response times, fire protection, emergency, medical services will improve further. So.
So I'd just like to make two comments. One is, you're going to continue to advocate for more staffing. However, I would look to management to consider advocating for using people differently. And maybe that's through negotiations, I don't know. I, I would be a strong advocate for that, number one. And number two, I have great concerns that if we're struggling with staffing five stations, how are we going to staff six? So again, I know we're moving forward, we're, we're hoping to get more firefighters on board, and I think the plan is great. But I'd like to advocate for using some of the staff differently. Any other comments from the board?
I think we're on the right track, but it's really concerning, and I'm glad you're telling us it was only a couple hours for a couple of days. Is that really what I heard?
So for this, in November, there was only two hours where there was a staffing issue at West Falmouth. And as I stated in the previous November, November of 20, 2022, there were 16 unfilled shifts at that particular station. And that goes against or goes towards the voluntary staffing that we used to have in order to get to 16. We would try and hire somebody voluntarily. And when we increased our staffing in December, December 15th of 2022, we started a day with 16. We've had struggles, but again, because of that number, we're, we're starting the day with 16 personnel. And, and again, you know, I, and my staff, along with the rest of the department, and, you know, we're, we're, we're here to, to, to provide the resources needed to perform our jobs. We have a lot of things going on. It's, doesn't, you know, doesn't change the way that we approach things, but we're just, we're very busy, and our resources are, it's time-stretched thin because we've got a lot of things going on, but we make it work, and we're here 24/7. And I would still, you know, I will continue to work with the town manager and assistant town manager and the board to address some of these issues. And we have been making quite a few strides in, in proving things here and understanding, you know, some of the sentiment that was expressed because I am also a taxpayer, so I too want to see things improved.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to vote to request funding from the Community Preservation Committee for the Falmouth Affordable Housing. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quickly, I've got 10 minutes, but I'm going to try to do it in five. We should be in consent agenda at this point, apologize for that. Madam Chair, Select Board, the Community Preservation Committee is required to transfer a minimum of 10% of CP funds into the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund each year. The request, this request in front of you tonight is an amount more than that 10% minimum required transfer. And based upon CPC records and projected budget, 10% equals, equates to about $404,600. While there's substantial uncommitted balance in the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund today, and you have included in your packet some information with regards to that balance, the Housing Coordinator has identified several projects that have the potential to deplete this balance relatively quickly. Following the review and discussion tonight, Madam Chair and Select Board, the board is being requested to vote to approve and recommend that myself as town manager send a request to the Community Preservation Commission to consider allocating $1.5 million in funding to the Affordable Housing Fund at April 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Madam Chair and Select Board, it's my recommendation that Select Board, following this review and discussion, vote to approve this amount of $1.5 million in funding to the Affordable Housing Fund.
Questions from the board?
To myself and Kim Fish, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions. Good idea.
Mr. Muscally?
No questions.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, motion to approve and recommend the town manager send a request to the CPC to consider allocating $1.5 million in funding to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund at the April 2024 Annual Town Meeting.
Well, second, this goes to the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discuss real estate transfer fee. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Very brief presentation is going to be given. Mr. Dave Garrison is going to be presenting from the Affordable Housing Committee. A recommendation, their commission, their recommendations, as you recall, Select Board has sent a letter or communication regarding this implementation, potential future implementation of a real estate transfer fee. Mr. Garrison?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Taylor, members of the Select Board. My name is David Garrison. I'm the Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee. Thank you for giving us time this evening to present our recommendation that the town adopt a real estate transfer fee with the proceeds dedicated to the Affordable Housing Fund. I'm accompanied this evening by Wayne Linkelfelter over there. As you know, Wayne is the Executive Director of the EDIC, but in his free time over the past several years, he's been assisting our committee in various policy measures. And for the past year, Wayne has been especially helpful in our work in developing our recommendation on the transfer fee idea. Several years ago, the committee put forward a number of policy proposals, two of which, an increase in the hotel motel tax and the initiation of a tax on Airbnb rentals, were adopted by town meeting and are now providing revenue for the Affordable Housing Fund. A transfer fee was considered by the committee, but not advanced at that time, but we do so now. This body knows well that the lack of affordable housing at a wide range of incomes presents a major challenge to the long-term viability of our community. Falmouth must make a significant progress adding more, many more affordable units, both for sale and for rent, if the social and economic life of our town is to thrive. A major aspect of this challenge is for the town to set aside sufficient funds that are dedicated to subsidizing a steady stream of projects, big and small. It is towards this funding objective that we appear before you this evening. At the committee's November 9th meeting, we approved a recommendation to this board, and a copy of that communication is in your packet. I want to say a few things by way of background and then set forth the elements of our recommendation. There is considerable demand from localities across, not only across the Cape, but around the Commonwealth for the authority to implement a transfer fee on residential real estate transactions with resulting revenue to go towards affordable housing. On the Cape, the towns of Chatham, Provincetown, Truro, Wellfleet, Nantucket, and the several villages that comprise Martha's Vineyard have all sent home rule petitions to the state legislature. Six other towns in the state have sent in petitions, including the city of Boston. While there is considerable support within the Cape's legislative delegation for these petitions, it is clear that the General Assembly is not disposed to approve the petitions as such. Several months ago, Governor Healy sent a package of affordable housing authorization requests to the legislature, including a proposal that all municipalities be given the local option to adopt a real estate transfer fee. With the governor now in firm support of the, for the transfer fee idea, there is a realistic chance that this authority for a local option may become law sometime next year, perhaps during the summer. To make sure this happens, members of the Cape's legislative delegation have urged Cape towns who have not yet sent in a petition to do so during their spring town meetings. With that objective in mind, our committee recommends that the Select Board develop a warrant article for the April Town Meeting that would send the necessary petition to the state. Let me review the elements of our recommendation. Our committee supports the thrust of the governor's proposal and thus urges that our home rule petition utilize a similar approach. There are several key provisions that I should mention. First, the transfer fee would apply only to residential real estate sales and only to the amount of the sale that exceeds $1 million. The general authority the governor has requested would allow localities to set the fee anywhere between a half percent and 2%. We recommend that the amount of the fee to be charged above the $1 million threshold in our town to be 2%. The revenue from the fee would be dedicated by law to the town's Affordable Housing Fund. In the interest of positioning Falmouth such that it could trigger the implementation of a transfer fee following state approval of the general authority, our committee recommends that our home rule petition include language that would deem favorable action by the town meeting on its petition to be sufficient such that the state, that the Select Board could enact the subsequently authorized local option and impose the fee immediately. This early implementation strategy would depend upon the details of the, of the Falmouth April passed home rule petition being consistent with the provisions of the state law that would be approved later in the summer. I should note a few other aspects of the transfer fee idea. All the home rule petitions, as well as the governor's proposal, include a long list of residential sales that would be excluded from the fee. For example, the passing of property by virtue of a divorce proceeding or sale to a local government or nonprofit organization. Those would be exempt. The committee is pleased to note that the governor's proposal does not exempt first-time home buyers, and we believe Falmouth should follow the governor's lead on that point. There is the question of who pays the fee? The buyer, or the seller, or some negotiated combination of both? The governor's proposal would require that the seller pay the fee. I believe our committee would have preferred to leave the who pays matter to be negotiated between the parties, or if we were forced to choose one or the other, we might opt to lay the requirement on the buyer. However, for the purpose of accelerating the process of our getting this fee approved and in place as soon as possible, we recommend that our home rule petition stick with the governor's approach of requiring the fee to be paid by the seller. With the governor's bill as a reference point, we estimate that. With the governor's bill as a reference point, we estimate that a two percent fee on the excess of residential sales above one million would have brought in about one point eight million dollars on a hundred and twenty-one tracks, transactions, had the fee been in place in two thousand and twenty-two. This estimate does not consider the impact of the various excluded transactions and is thus overstated to some degree. Moreover, the number of applicable transactions, as well as the amount of the sales above the threshold vary a good deal from year to year, as you would expect. Thus, by way of example, under the governor's plan in using two percent transfer fee, a residential sale of one point five million would generate a fee of ten thousand dollars. I mention the annual fee prospect because it is essential to our town's efforts to increase the supply of affordable housing that we have enough in the Affordable Housing Fund and that the level of these funds be consistently renewed. That will give us a fighting chance to get on top of the town's need for this housing. Falmouth needs many hundreds of affordable units for sale and rental during the next decade, and to achieve that level of activity, we need devices such as the transfer fee. Your committee urges this board to support the adoption of a real estate transfer fee. Thank you for attention, and Wayne and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Mr. Muscally?
Mr. Garrison, thank you for your, your, your work on this and Mr. Linkelfelter and your committee. Would, would the petition specify exactly how the funds would be distributed out of the affordable housing?
No, just that they go to the fund.
Okay, so, I mean, are, has there been any thought about, you know, going forward, how those funds would be distributed?
Well, the town has a process already, as you know, for making those decisions, and we're not suggesting that that process change. You, we, we have a, a step-by-step undertaking that leads to a set of recommendations, and ultimately they come back to the board because they're CPC funds. So I don't, wouldn't suggest having these, this particular fee have a, one purpose, whereas the other fees we just mentioned, the hotel motel tax add-on and the Airbnb, do not have such.
Well, first, I mean, I'm thinking that this, earlier today, we heard, where, we heard about deeds and restrictions and so forth. Would these funds be able to be used for those types of incentive?
I don't see any reason why not.
Mr. Brown? Miss Scott Price?
So the, if I'm understanding, the ask is for the board to write this petition for April Town Meeting, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Right, and, and you need, you have timing issues here if you're going to do it, obviously, for the April Town Meeting, since you're going to be putting together the warrant beginning in January. You've got the, the town council needs to be given the authority to spend some time to develop the proposal, and so there's work to be done. If you're going to do it, you need to move on it fairly quick.
Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Garrison. Real quickly, our, our timeline is tight. And, and talking to Kim, I understand, this is probably the first time, and, and Select Board member Muscally is new to the board, obviously. The Select Board hasn't heard the presentation before. I think this is an opportunity. Our timeline is extremely tight. If the board gives me direction to begin developing this petition article, we'll start working with town council. There's nothing to really vote on tonight, but I'm, I am seeking kind of a consensus of the board that this is the direction to pursue. I see a lot of merit in it. My recommendation is to let Town Meeting decide in April, but our article, our warrant, I should say, the warrant closes January twelfth, so that, that's the tightness of the timeline. Getting this back in front of you is a document to review and then placing that on the April twenty-four.
So you're looking for consensus for the board to give you direction?
To allow, to allow me to proceed with drafting this petition article and then bringing that back in front of you for a potential vote at a future time. Yes.
I'm in favor of moving forward.
Me too.
Okay, I am as well.
If I'm looking at the calendar, there's only the December eighteenth meeting. The warrant closes January seventh?
The, the warrant closes January twelfth, right. So bear in mind, what we need to have in place on January twelfth is an article that says that the, that we're seeking a town meeting vote to authorize the Select Board to submit a home rule petition to the legislature. So we don't have to have the legislation fine-tuned by January twelfth. That, you know, we'll want to have that pretty well nailed down prior to Town Meeting, but you don't need that for January twelfth.
So we wouldn't need to know the threshold, the amount or any of that at this point?
For January twelfth, you do not. That's correct. Yes.
So we will direct the town manager to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, report from the Community Preservation Committee.
I'm Maureen Thomas, the Community Preservation Coordinator, and I am here this evening on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee to present an annual report. And I'm joined this evening by Sandy Cuny, the Vice Chair of the CPC. And this is a list of the current CPC members. Russ Robbins is the Chair. He's an at-large member. There are four at-large members appointed by the Select Board to the CPC. Sandy is also an at-large member. Steve Patton is the clerk and the Housing Authority rep. Tom Crane is the financial officer, also an at-large member. Michael Stone, also an at-large member. John Drewley is the Planning Board rep. Bob Brown is the Recreation Committee representative. Betsy Gladfelter is the rep from the Conservation Commission, and Tamsin George represents the Historical Commission. This table shows the CP fund revenues for the past eighteen years since the CPA was passed in Falmouth. So you can see that the local three percent surcharge on property taxes has generated over forty-nine million dollars. The state match through the CPA Trust Fund has generated over nineteen million dollars, and that state match has been approximately thirty-nine percent through the years. And the total revenue that includes the local surcharge and the trust fund distribution has generated an amazing sixty-eight million dollars for the community to go towards community housing, open space and recreation, and also historic resources. So a lot of that project funding would not get funded through the general government budget. There just isn't enough funding to go around to fund all of those projects. So CP fund really does help to improve the quality of life in Falmouth through these projects. You can see that the CP fund projects are dispersed throughout the town. This is a map that's on the cpfundfalmouth.org website, which is a great resource if you're looking for any kind of information about the CP fund. We update this regularly after every town meeting, so there's a list of all of the projects that have been funded in town since fiscal year two thousand and five. We update it with application deadlines and other meetings like the needs assessment that we do every year. This shows the use of funds since fiscal year two thousand and six. You can see that the land bank debt has used most of the CP funds at about forty-two percent, and the land bank debt was assumed by the CPA when it was adopted in two thousand and five. That debt will be retired in two thousand and thirty-five. The balance is approximately one point two million dollars. So in about a decade, we'll have that debt paid. Because the town was smart and set aside all of those funds in reserve in the CP fund, so servicing that debt on an annual basis, and we'll soon have that paid. Next, community housing has used about twenty-three percent of the funds, and historic preservation, about thirteen percent. Recreation, about twelve percent. Open space, approximately seven percent. That doesn't include all of the open space and recreation parcels or the interest in land that were acquired through the land bank when that was active. And then the administration of the fund has used a little bit more than three percent. And this is a table basically showing you the same information of the use of funds by category, but with the dollar amounts shown. The total land bank debt was, I believe, thirty-one million at the time CPA was adopted, so you can see we've almost retired that debt. And at the April two thousand and twenty-three Town Meeting, these are the projects that were approved and funded. The Upper Coonamessett Restoration Project at two hundred thousand dollars, the Little Pond Conservation Area Public Access Improvements at seven hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, the second phase of the Edward Marks Building Exterior Rehabilitation Project at five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seventy-six dollars, the old burying ground, ground penetrating radar survey, which is phase two of that project, at twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, the Dr. Francis Wick's House Rehabilitation, also a phase two project, at seventy-three thousand, five hundred and five dollars, Highfield Hall Exterior Rehabilitation and Water Abatement at one point one million dollars. Last year, the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund was approved for two point five million and the CPC administrative budget at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. So in total, last year, approximately five point four million dollars came from the CP fund for these projects. This year, the CPC is considering the projects listed here. This is for April two thousand and twenty-four Town Meeting, and those include the Trotting Park Pickleball Court Complex at one point nine five million, the Trotting Park Old Skate Park Rehabilitation Project at five hundred thousand, North Falmouth Woodlands at three million, the first, whoops, First Congregational Church of Falmouth Steeple Rehabilitation Project at six hundred and two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. We know now that the trustees will be requesting one point five million for Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, and the CPC will consider that and vote on that at a January meeting. And the CPC administrative budget was also level funded. And I should note that none of these projects have been voted on yet. The CPC is going to be, starting to approve these at this Thursday evening CPC meeting, and they'll approve some of them in January as well. And the funding rounds are always announced, the, the due dates for applications are always announced in January, so we'll be selecting dates and announcing those next month. The time urgent projects are usually heard at November Town Meetings, and the deadline for those applications is mid-April. And those projects have to meet a time urgent criteria for a significant loss of funding, a risk to public safety or a risk or of damage or a loss of a town asset, or an unforeseen necessity that comes forward during the implementation of an already funded project or when a scope of a project that's already been funded is expanded. And all other non-time urgent projects are usually considered at the April Town Meeting, and the deadline for those applications is mid-August. And this slide shows some photos of some projects that were completed in two thousand and twenty-three or that are near completion. So the Willett Way Community Housing Project that Habitat Humanity did, they built ten affordable homes in East Falmouth, the Keeper's House Rehabilitation at Knobbska, the Falmouth Water Stewards and the Beach Committee Water Stations at nine Falmouth Beaches, and the Nye Park Tennis Pickleball and Basketball Court Project. And the last, lastly, is the Bayview Cemetery Gravestone Restoration Project, which is coming along nicely and nearing completion. And with that, I'd like to say thank you to the Select Board and the people of Falmouth for making all of these wonderful projects possible, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions from the board?
I'm curious about the, the Lightkeeper's House. Is that open now or will it be open soon?
I believe it is open for tours now, yes.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
Done.
Very well done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay, discuss and vote on the approval of a letter of support concerning the proposed connection of the Shining Sea Bike Way to the Cape Cod Canal Path. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a little bit of context and background. The proposed Born Rail Trail Project, as you probably recall, upon completion would utilize an existing section of the Falmouth Secondary Rail designated as the F-two to close about a six-and-a-half mile gap between the Cape Cod Canal Path and the Shining Sea Bike Way. Madam Chair and Select Board, some folks have recently asked, so if in two thousand and nineteen, Select Board, Falmouth Select Board adopted, approved, and voted to approve a letter supporting the rail with trail, why are we, four years later, back here, town manager requesting the Select Board to consider a second letter? The reason for that, there's been some additional information. I've been here for about five and a half, going on six months, and I've had a chance to tour many of facilities that I'll be talking with you tonight about. But I think most importantly, the reason why this request is before the Select Board tonight is that beginning in February of this year, February two thousand and twenty-three, there have been several letters, half a dozen perhaps, from organizations supporting the Town of Born's preferred concept of rail two-trail, eliminating the tracks. Several letters have been submitted since February of this year to Governor Healy's office. And as you all may recall, the letter that Town of Falmouth Select Board voted to approve back in two thousand and nineteen, the letter was sent to the Recreational Trails Program, to the manager of that program through the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation. My recommendation is we up the, 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 the level of authority where this letter's going to, following some of the counterparts, the Born Rail Trail proponents, and send this letter, if it's approved tonight, to the governor's office. Madam Chair and Select Board, as you know, once the proposed project, this, this rail trail is connect, is completed, it will, would potentially connect the towns of Falmouth, Born and Sandwich, and create about a twenty-four mile uninterrupted multi-use pathway to the upper Cape. Town of Falmouth would be responsible for about a mile of that new path. As I just mentioned, back on January twenty-eighth of two thousand and nineteen, Select Board here in Falmouth voted to adopt an official position with regards to the Town of Born proposed project that will connect the Shining Sea Bike Way to the Cape Cod Path. The position the Select Board took then in two thousand and nineteen was to support the funding and design of this project adjacent to the existing rail line or rail with trail in order to preserve the operational integrity of the existing rail system. The Town of Falmouth is currently at over thirty percent design based upon the originally agreed upon concept, originally agreed upon concept with the Town of Born of rail with trail. On September twenty-eighth of this year, I had a chance to meet with the Chair of the Falmouth Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, the President of the Friends of Born Rail Trail, the President of the Falmouth Bike Ways, and the Town of Born Administrator, Ms. Marlene McCollum. Madam Chair and Select Board, the purpose of the meeting was to brief myself as the new oncoming town manager on the reasons for the Town of Born's March two thousand and twenty-three decision to pivot away from the previously agreed upon rail with trail design and construction that results, again, in the removal of the F-two tracks to a rail two-trail position. And it was articulated to me that the reasons for Born's decision to pivot from the rail with trail to rail two-trail, design and construction, were related to higher construction costs, much higher with rail with trail design. Estimates at that time were five times the construction costs with regards to the lesser cost rail two-trail conversion, and certainly a much longer timeline for completion. And, and back in September, as they are now, valid, valid concerns and valid points. The Falmouth Secondary Rail Line, F-two, currently serves the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station, the UCRTS, which, Madam Chair and Select Board, as you all know, is a very vital part of the Upper Cape Municipal Solid Waste and Construction Demolition Transportation Network and System. The RTS, the Regional Transfer Station, is currently operated through an intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Falmouth, Mashpee, and Sandwich. And I'd note, and as you all likely recall, Town of Born had been an original partner, a four-way partnership, but decided to withdrew from that IMA back in December of two thousand and twenty-two. The Regional Transfer Station system receives, I'm sorry, approximately six to eight roll-off container trucks per hour, or fifty to sixty per day, and monthly tonnage is received at the facility, which is averaged annually, is about two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five tons of construction and demolition and a hundred and seventy tons of municipal solid waste, MSW. The facility receives about ten railroad cars delivered per week, and, for example, and, and this information was provided from the current operator through an agreement, Mr. Cavosa of the RTS. In August of this year, thirty-nine cars came in, forty-one out, forty-one went out, and September, thirty-two cars went into the facility and thirty-four came out. Madam Chair and Select Board members, the capacity of each rail car is up to a hundred and Madam Chair and Select Board members, the capacity of each railcar is up to 100 tons, and each roll-off truck carries three tons of CND, construction and demolition, so a single railcar can hold the equivalent of about 30 roll-off container trucks, which I think is significant. Wanted to bring to the Board's attention, and this may have been discussed in 2019, I don't know. MassDOT has long recognized the value of utilizing rail transport of solid waste as a means of reducing the number of trucks on our roadways and bridges, to the extent that the agency has subsidized the heavy equipment on the site of the Regional Transfer Station in terms of front-end loaders and railcar loaders at a rate of about 60%. That's how much the MassDOT sees value in operation and transporting of solid waste and CND via rail. In its Waste Management Technical Bulletin, and this is included in your packets, Objective WM2 Support and Integrated Solid Waste Management System. The Cape Cod Commission has identified use of alternative methods to trucking to transport waste and recycling materials from Barnstable County, including rail and ship, as a method of achieving the objective of reserving roadway capacity, keeping trucks off our roadways and bridges. In December 2021, again, following the 2019 Select Board decision, a report entitled "Solid Waste Management on Cape Cod and the Islands: Understanding Options for Municipal Solid Waste Processing, Disposal, and Recycling." The Cape Cod Commission again identifies waste transportation by rail as an optimal long-term solution, and the Falmouth Regional Transfer Station is one of only two, Yarmouth Transfer Station being the second existing rail transfer stations. A more recent October 2022 Cape Cod Commission report by the same name as above goes on to say that the Falmouth Regional Transfer Station and the Yarmouth Transfer Station could meet projected peak, projected transfer needs of 85,000 tons per day, or tons per year, sorry, and recommends developing both the Falmouth Regional Transfer Station and the Yarmouth Transfer Station to ensure critical redundancy going forward in our future. If the born rail-to-trail model of design and construction proceeds, in my opinion, it would effectively make the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station non-viable because it relies upon the F2 tracks, as you all know, to effectively and efficiently transport waste off of Cape Cod by railcar. And Madam Chair and Select Board, redundancy in any system, as you all know, is critical. It's important. And in the case of solid waste management, in the event that the Born landfill site should be closed for any reason, a fire in the facility that shuts down the facility, having a fully operational Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station with access to the F2 secondary line is going to be essential for Falmouth and its partners Mashpee and Sandwich. At its November 20th, 2023 meeting, the Town of Mashpee Select Board approved a letter of support for rail-with-trail design and construction in order to preserve, again, that operational effectiveness of the Regional Transfer Station, and the copy of that letter adopted by the Mashpee Select Board is included in your packet. Madam Chair, I'm recommending the Select Board approve the attached letter of support for rail-with-trail in conjunction with the design and construction of the proposed connection of the Shining Sea Bike Way to the Cape Cod Canal Path. The letter, draft letter, in your packet, I wanted to point this out, I think I alluded to it earlier, is addressed to Governor Healy's office. And Madam Chair and Board, I'll take direction from you if you'd prefer that that be signed by, executed by Select Board, or if you want to leave that as my signature with your direction, of course, approval of the letter contents. And with that, I'll stop and answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Muscally, we'll start with you, and then Mr. Brown.
If I may, as you know, Mr. Renshaw, I was at that meeting September 2023 as well. And one of the things that hasn't been mentioned is the federal funding that's available for the current project, for the project, if it goes rail-to-trail. There's $22 million available in ARPA funds, or funds that are available to subsidize the cost of the rail-with-trail, and I think that's a very important...
Do-trail.
Rail-to-trail, I'm sorry, thank you, yeah. So I think that's a very important consideration. I also think the utilization of rail going forward in the event of a disaster, if you will, or catastrophe, or the closure of the landfill, isn't that dependent somewhat on that railroad bridge that's at Cape Cod Canal, which has some issues with respect to how often it's used and possible needed repairs going forward? It's in pretty bad shape, that bridge, isn't it?
So Madam Chair and Select Board Member Muscally, it's my understanding that the lifts and the condition of that bridge, and this is based on Army Corps, and Peter McConney may be able to help me out with this, I don't have the stats with me today, but there's considerable, there's a lot more lifts, scheduled lifts. I think we were given during that meeting, three lifts per day of that bridge. That, based upon my research, is not accurate. There's many more lifts. And Peter, or can you address that? Do you have the stats with you? I'm sorry, I don't have them.
Yes, Peter McConney, Director of Public Works. I did have a conversation with the Commander of the Bridge for the Army Corps of Engineer with the Bridge Operations, and they basically run about 1,100 openings per year, and if you divide that out, it does come down to three per day, but typically they don't run on Saturdays, Sundays, kind of thing. So most of their operations are for trash when they lower it, but it's several times a day for trash. Like I say, 1,100 times per year. Per the Commander of the Bridge, they've been going under some significant repairs for the bridge, and they do not see a cease in the bridge, or they see that as a viable operations, especially if MassDOT has been subsidizing some of the equipment for that facility. They don't see any cease of operations for that bridge.
I'm going to go to Mr. Brown, and then Mr. Zalinski.
So I understand that the people are tired of waiting forever, and we want to be young enough to ride bicycles when this thing is completed, but I don't think it makes any sense to take away this vital infrastructure. And I'd like to explore further. Mr. Carvosa and I had a conversation, and he said, maybe there should just be a train running. And I take another step further and say, maybe there should be an electric trolley that goes from North Falmouth to the canal every hour. It's only six miles, six and a half miles. You could probably do that in 10 or 15 minutes. The trolley could sit at the other end of the spur, pick up people there. There's a couple of stops along the way. You could park it in North Falmouth and put a charging station there, and have an electric trolley that makes little or no noise. I mean, that would, I've talked to some railroad people, and they say that a trolley like that would probably cost a couple million dollars to be custom-built with bicycle racks and all, and then we'd still have to figure out the cost of adding the rail assembly that would facilitate. Because you see pickup trucks that work on the rails, they have tires to drive on the road, and they have rails that go onto the tracks. I'd really like to investigate that. That's something that could be done within a couple of years. It wouldn't be ready for next summer, but by the following summer, I would think, if it's viable, we could use some of the ARPA funds to get that in place. That'd be a lot quicker than arguing and fighting over tearing up infrastructure that's going to take years to argue about, let alone building it. So that's my position.
Mr. Zalinski.
I'm sorry, Peter, I have a question for you. That's all right. Given the condition of the Born and Sagamore Bridge, don't you feel like it's a little premature to, until we have a solution to those bridges and their degradation, to give up what could possibly be a line of logistical support in an emergency by taking up those rails? I mean, in the off-chance that we had a catastrophe, that one of the bridges went down, are getting critical logistics to the Cape? I mean, what's your opinion on that?
So, yes, it could be used as for redundancy. For Public Works, the way we look at it, it could be used for redundancy for that facility. Prior to 2017, the four towns, when Born was a joint member, the town was run by the four towns, and the Town of Falmouth ran that operation. We had our employees up there running that operation. For us, for Public Works, we would, for feasibility and for operations, we would not want to see that facility go away. That would take, that would be, that would take a big portion...
I think you're misunderstanding my question. My question is for supportive aid in an emergency.
Correct, yeah, it could be used for supportive aid. If you don't mind, just, our current operation, we run four trash trucks per day, and three recycling trucks per day. Trash trucks have to go up to the Born facility. They go up, they fill up in the morning, they go up mid-afternoon, they come back down, finish their route, and then they go back up again. So that's pretty much twice a day. Takes, you got to go up to the facility, turn around, go up to the road, and we come back down to Falmouth. With the repairs that were going on at the bridge, our trucks were on the road, just tripping. They were doing two hours a day, just for that trip, just to unload the truck. It was taking them off our roads. So for us, that wasn't feasible for us to be able to, for that round trip. Having that viable option, to have that open for us for the trash also, but as I say, again, if there was ever an emergency, to be able to bring facilities or, you know, whatever they need to bring over the bridge...
Emergency supplies.
Emergency supplies. And one thing that had been mentioned in the reports that Town Manager had mentioned is another option for those facilities up there and for on the base is they're looking for a composting digester, okay? And now you've already heard the Solid Waste Advisory Committee talking about it, and you've had some people tonight that were getting on to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee talking about that they're looking to do an Upper Cape facility digest to be able to take care of that. If that was able to be removed off that facility by rail, it'd be very convenient for all four towns. So it would be for, it would be for Falmouth, it would be for Mashpee, and it would be for Sandwich.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a clarifying question, the last bullet point. If the Born rail-to-trail model of design and construction proceeds, it would effectively make the Upper Cape Regional, yeah, non-viable because it relies on the F2 tracks to effectively and efficiently transport waste off Cape by railcar. So if I'm understanding this, if Born goes through with their rail-to-trail, then it makes all of it move because we wouldn't be able to get the trains from Falmouth to Born, is that correct?
If. Madam Chair, do you mind if I allow? Well, actually, Mr. Carvosa, if you could have a seat real quick.
Yeah, we're not going to do that yet.
I'll try, I'll try to...
This entire meeting is a lie.
So Pete, Peter.
You're on the agenda, you're going to discuss the trail, and you have no intention of discussing the trail. You're discussing an entirely different project.
Sir, you're, stop.
I understand.
Go ahead.
Peter, could I ask you to go to the podium again? And again, I don't want to misstate the impact of removing the F2 tracks, the secondary tracks. It's my understanding if that segment were to be removed, it would have a direct impact on our ability as a town to operate the Regional Transfer Station. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Would eliminate that, the viability of using the Regional Transfer Station.
Okay, that's right, thank you.
Correct. And Madam Chair, if I could, real quickly, Mr. Muscally had a great point, and I think I prefaced my comments with, you know, the rail-to-trail option that the Town of Born has pivoted to, it is a less costly option, it is a quicker timeframe to completion. I'm not disputing that, I'm not. The ARPA funds, the federal funds that the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority has committed to, $22 million, I have no reason to doubt those funds are committed and available. My concern is a manager, having managed similar ARPA projects, you all know, just several months ago, there's very strict timelines for when that money needs to be allocated, appropriated, and then ultimately spent. It's my belief that that would be a serious challenge for this project. Railroad rights are a very real issue, and if that were ever to be, if these tracks were ever to be proposed to be removed, I think there'd be some long-term legal implications and challenges associated with the removal of those tracks that, in my opinion, would take it beyond the December 31st, 2026, I think that's the date, timeframe, where those ARPA funds would need to be expended. So I think that would be a challenge with the use, with regards to the use of those ARPA federal funds. That's my opinion.
Okay, Mr. Carvosa will take your comments, and then Mr. Johnson. I have your name. Wait, we'll go.
I think it's very important to distinguish rail-with-trail, and I think you, that's what you had commented before, and I think you meant rail-to-trail. When you do rail-to-trail, you're ripping out the rail. So it's a very important distinction. One thing that's very important to understand, and I've been, you know, thrown around in the media, that the transfer station serves me. Transfer station is something that I operate for the communities, okay? I'm just a subcontractor there. The reason we opened and the Board of Managers decided to keep that transfer station open is there is no viable landfill to reach by truck from this community or any other community on the Upper Cape. There's none. When the Born landfill closes, where do we go? CMAS is a mechanical function, it's been operating for 35 years. When that, when that is gone, where do we go with our waste? And every single landfill in the state is threatened with closure. So it's a real pressure that every community has as to where they're going to go. And the Cape Cod Commission did a great study, twice, and they recognized the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station and the Yarmouth Transfer Station and rail to be the solution in the future for the Cape. Right now, you're going to the Town of Born with your waste, but not one business in the community is allowed to go to the Town of Born. I can't bring any waste there. It's just residential waste. That's one-tenth of the waste that this community creates, and that's a smaller portion of what the Upper Cape creates. Your thought process really has to be, where is the municipal solid waste for our community, our businesses, and our residents going to go in the future? It's not going to go to the Born landfill.
Thank you.
But it could go to Yarmouth.
It's unrealistic, it's, it's, it would be unrealistic to drive a truck from here to Yarmouth with residential trash. Peter's having a problem driving from here to Born with trucks. If you decided to drive a truck from here to Yarmouth to go dump during the summer, you know, you're talking about quadrupling your budget for your waste removal.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'll get right to you.
My name is Leonard Johnson from North Falmouth. Catherine Jansen, who is the Chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, has COVID, so she is not here tonight, and she's asked me to speak on her behalf and on behalf of the bicyclists who have not yet been heard from. The debate is whether Falmouth should support an extension of the Shining Sea Bike Way, and let's talk about the Bike Way for a change, through Born following a rail-with-trail approach, which means building the path alongside the rails, now in place, or rail-to-trail option, which entails going the centerline and moving the rails. In a nutshell, and I will explain this, support for building the path along following the rail-with-trail method is, in effect, a vote to kill the project to extend the bike path. Here's why. To begin with, the option with rail-with-trail is estimated to cost $80 million, as opposed to the $20 million following the centerline approach. Further, Tom Cahill has secured, as you've heard, a federal grant of $20 million to build the extension, but only if the path is built up the centerline. Building the rail alongside, building the trail alongside the rails is much more complicated, and as I've indicated, much more expensive. In 14 segments, land takings will be involved to widen the bed in order to accommodate the path alongside. Further, 11 of the bridges along the route would have to be totally rebuilt. Finally, and I think this is the most important point, the rail bed itself would have to be widened to pass through the Marsh and Pocasset. And the EPA would never allow the marsh to be disturbed to that extent. Imagine the amount of fill that would be dumped into the marsh. So that's not going to happen logistically. So you can understand why the rail-to-trail option has been adopted by the Town of Born, as you've seen the letter that you received, and the unanimous vote of the Board for the rail-to-trail reflects the desire of the people of Born. Now I would like to add that I believe the process of bringing this issue before the Board tonight is flawed for several reasons. First, the wording of the agenda item itself is misleading because the letter to support the rail-with-trail option is a vote to kill the project. It just says discussion of, a supportive, a letter in support of the path, which is not the case. Further, there has been no broad discussion, public discussion of this issue. The choice of which approach to follow has had, has widespread implications for both Falmouth and Born. This decision should be thoroughly vetted, with everyone being allowed to express their opinion, not just me or just Mr. McCarvosa. We would like... We would like, we would hope that any letter expressing the support of a given issue that the select board intends to send to the state, or anyone else for that matter, would represent the will of the people of Falmouth. I'm not sure that what you're proposing is the case. Finally, reflecting the extensive use, three hundred thousand annual users is measured by an electronic counter on the Shining Sea Bike Way, as well as the health and economic benefits to Falmouth from the bike path. My conversations with people in Falmouth indicated the vast majority feel that Bourne should have the same benefits from bike path that we have enjoyed here in Falmouth. I believe that Falmouth should not stand in the way of letting that happen. So we respectfully request that you have an open forum at some point in the future to thoroughly discuss this issue and not in this kind of a meeting at this time of night, and allocate ten minutes for it. So we respectfully request that the board not send a letter supporting rail-with-trail. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, your la- letter raises all the issues regarding solid waste disposal and how detrimental losing rail capability for solid waste.
Could, could you introduce yourself?
Oh, Bob Leary, uh, precinct.
For the record and for, for people listening, thank you.
So, uh, your letter raises all the issues regarding solid waste disposal and how detrimental losing rail capability for solid waste disposal would be. As a fourteen-year member of the Falmouth Planning Board and one of the three co-authors of the local comprehensive plan, I'd like to add two more reasons why the rail line should remain intact. The LCP committee looked at the F-two line as a lifeline to the Cape should a natural or man-made disaster strike Cape Cod, to Mr. Zelinski's point. The ability to transport large amounts of materials and equipment by rail to a staging area on Joint Base Cape Cod would be crucial to our disaster response and rebuilding efforts. The military also has a stake in the survival of the F-two line. The base has five military commands and there are military uses for the F-two line. Joint Base Cape Cod spokesman Don Vici wrote in an email to the Times that Joint Base Cape Cod uses the F-two line to haul trash and debris off the Cape, as well as for transportation for large-scale troop and equipment movement. Removing this, the line would deny the base vital capabilities for national defense. I think that's a huge consideration to take into account. I've read your draft letter and I heard it again tonight. In support of the rail-with-trail option, the information and rationale you present in this letter leaves no room for doubt that removing the F-two line for the sole purpose of a Bike Way is short-sighted, environmentally unsound, and economically foolhardy. I hold highly support your endorsement of this letter stating your position on this very important matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fineran.
Mark Fineran, Grand Ave. Um, I was very good friends with John Elliott, uh, who was chairman of the, uh, Upper Cape Transfer Station, and I used to attend many of the meetings with him. Um, so I'm a little familiar with the subject. In the past, we've made some serious mistakes mismanaging our transfer station.
Folks, can we let Mr. Fineran speak, please?
Um, and, and the dump. There was a difference between the two. Um, and in making those mistakes, we've enhanced the business at the Bourne landfill. I mean, they make plenty of money off us. Um, so their vote to go, uh, rail-to-trail was a little selfish on their part because, uh, they serve to make more money at their transfer station, their dump, whatever, if that rail is closed, because it's going to be the natural place for other things to go. So I think they had a bit of an ulterior motive when they voted for that. Um, and I think removing, um, this rail line would just compound many of the serious mistakes we've made in the past and, and, you know, uh, rail-with-trail is more expensive, obviously, but I think it's the only alternative. Um, it would be quite foolish to remove those tracks. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fineran. Yes, please.
Scott Lindell, fifteen Lantern Lane. Um, I was the former chairman of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee and a member of that committee for about ten years. Um, so I've been through this, uh, debate and questions, um, many times. Um, I didn't think today was going to be a question about trash, but, uh, here we are, and it does sound like we need a more comprehensive and thoughtful discussion around that. We've heard that this rail line is critical for potential natural disasters, but look where it is. It is low-lying, going over marsh. If you see some kind of hurricane come up Buzzards Bay, that's going to be the first thing that's going to be washed out. I think we really need to think about a more stable and, and, uh, long-lived, in this age of climate change, solution for moving our trash across the bridge. It's probably not using that line. It's probably using the line that's already existing and serving Yarmouth. We should be thinking about a tr- a transfer station where it is now is fine, is protected from climate change, but not the rail. Move that transfer station to somewhere along the Sandwich Line. There, we've got a, a white elephant of a, of a power plant sitting there that's served, that's served from that line, and there's lots of real estate around there. This should be a, this should be a regional, you know, Cape Cod Commission and the towns getting together to think about this more thoughtfully than, than just rushing to try to preserve what we have now. We need to be thinking long-term and through this climate crisis, we have more thoughtful ways that are going to be resilient. We don't have a resilient line right now. That's my thought.
Thank you.
We, we, Mr. Lindell, we did have testimony, and we've had, heard from the Cape Cod Commission, with two reports that they find that this transfer station is essential. So it's not like it hasn't been thought about or talked about. And this letter we're considering is just a reiteration of our position in, in response to the fact that there's active, the Bourne Select Board is actively pursuing this other option that we haven't yet agreed to. And they haven't reached out to us to talk about it, except to send a letter to our town manager, just alerting, I'll say, by the way, we just voted this. So.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Ken Chetlin. I'm a resident of Bourne. I'm the president of the Friends of the Bourne Rail Trail. I'm also on the, um, Town Committee, uh, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee in Bourne. I'm one of the people who met with, uh, Mr. Renshaw to discuss this matter. Um, the truth is, we met with Mr. Renshaw, um, for the very reason that he was new to the town of Falmouth, and we wanted to make sure that he was aware of the project and what position the Bourne Board of Select had unanimously taken. He wasn't here at that point. It was never our intention to cut Falmouth out of this process. In fact, we've worked really closely with the bike committees in Falmouth, both the Town Committee and the Nonprofit Committee. Um, I, I want to reiterate, um, what Mr. Johnson said. If you take this vote tonight, and we only found out about this matter, um, two days ago, and it's a testament how passionate the, um, constituents in Falmouth feel, that this room is filled, um, three hours after this meeting started. If you take this, this decision and you send this letter, you are in fact making a statement from the town of Falmouth that they do not want this bike project to go forward. Yet, we've worked on this thing for seven years. There is no way rail-with-trail will ever happen. So I just want you to understand that if you follow the recommendation of the town administrator tonight without further process, we were, we actually were not under the impression we'd even be able to speak to the substance of it, that this would be procedural. Then you are very quickly making a decision on behalf of the town and its residents that you do not support, um, the extension of the Shining Sea Bike Way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw another, you had your hand up.
I was just going to say the same thing.
Okay. Mr. McConerty?
Peter McConerty, Director of Public Works. I think there's a little confusion on here, and I'm not trying to make a pun to this, but the trains already left the station for the town of Falmouth. In two thousand nineteen, when this original letter was, was, um, I mean, when this original vote was taken by the Board of Selectmen, soon after that, Falmouth Public Works moved forward with the design from, um, County Road to the Bourne Town Line. You hear that this is, we've been working on this for seven years. We've been working on this for three years. Everybody knows that we've been working and Falmouth was rail-with-trail. Everyone in the room has. So, and we're moving forward with it. We got CPC grants to do the design. We got Chapter Ninety funds to do the design. And we also had a split grant from Mass Trails with the town of Bourne and the town of Falmouth. That's for doing test holes and doing some other exploratory, um, um, digging that needed to be done on the bike path. Those funds have been expended. The town of Bourne already knew that we were moving forward with that. Yes, we were working with the town of Bourne, but the town of Bourne made the decision to say, we're not doing this anymore. The town of Falmouth has not. We, we're moving forward. Our project is already at the state right now being designed. We're moving forward with our design. So, and, and we plan to continue to move forward. So there's a li- I think there's a little bit of confusion.
Let him finish, please.
I think there's a little bit of confusion. A vote was made. We moved forward. We're following that plan. Um, so in all honesty, I'm not really sure why we're having a vote. Again, it's already been decided upon by the town of Falmouth that we're going to move forward. With the top, the Public Works have spent a, a significant amount of money to get where we are for all the preliminary design, the concept designs, and moving forward. And I do believe that our town engineer even brought this forward to a select board meeting, at least once, um, to talk about the design that we're moving forward with. So if, if this was, if this was not sent in and this was reversed, it would be a setback for, for Public Works. We'd have to go all the way back. We've already been designed. We've looked at the, uh, bridge going over the Old Main Road. We've looked at the tracks. We've, we've fought, we've worked with, um, the railroad. We've worked with their engineers. We're already moving. We're past twenty-five percent. Once you get past twenty-five percent and that gets approved through, uh, through state and through, uh, with our, uh, with our, uh, consultants, after that, it's just formality to go up to seventy-five percent, but the design has already been set. And, and my understanding is, and it's not my understanding, it is, is that, that the town of Bourne and the town of Falmouth, both were using VHB as a consultant because we wanted to do the economy scale to get a better project out of it. So both towns, we're using the same consultant on this.
But, Peter, if, if I may, I mean, if, if Bourne's not going to go forward along those lines, then where, where, where does that leave Falmouth? I mean, what, 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 what more can we do if, if, if Bourne's not going to support it? Is there anything left for Falmouth to do? Are you going to continue to design something that's not in keeping with what Bourne wants to do?
Yeah. So here, here's a question that I can put back to the Board of Selectmen, and so the town of Bourne decides to pause this, okay? So how long does the Public Works in the town of Falmouth that, that wants to move forward with this design, how long do we wait? Right? I mean, we've heard that's been going on for seven years. We've been moving for three years, and we're trying to push this along. You know, it could be, it could be years down the road that we're going to hold up our design for Bourne.
A good point. I just, I don't think it's been mentioned, though. Uh, the, the, the whole extension is six and a half miles. The only portion that's in the town of Falmouth is actually a little bit over a half a mile. Is that correct?
About a mile, yeah.
Is it, uh, half a mile, a mile? Okay. Thank you.
Yes. And then, Mr. Fineran, I do see you.
It is true that the town of Falmouth has been working diligently on what's considered Phase Four of this project. There are four phases in the original concept of rail-with-trail. Um, the reason we started, uh, in Bourne with Phase One, and then we moved to Phase Four, which is eight tenths of a mile on Falmouth and the rest of it in, in the town of Bourne, was because they were the easiest phases to do. They were the phases that probably could be done rail-with-trail because they did not involve as much of widening of the right-of-way, therefore takings of private property, um, and bridges. And what happened in the course of that was we spent, uh, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars paying VHB to design these two phases. And that's where we figured out it was going to be prohibitively expensive, um, to build rail-with-trail. And we came to realize that Phases Two and Three could never be done because that's where all the eleven bridges have to be built, eleven new bridges, and all the private taking, uh, taking of private property. So it wasn't like anybody was intending to, you know, fool anybody. The town of Bourne also started out thinking that rail-with-trail was a viable design. And when it became clear that it could never be done, that's when the town changed and did a pivot to rail-to-trail, which is now endorsed by everyone in the town of Bourne. Um, the, the truth is that much of the work that's been done on Phases One and Phase Four, including the Falmouth section, will be perfectly applicable if we pull up and build on the center line. That work is not all wasted.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Fineran.
I was here in two thousand nineteen when this, or I believe that's the year you said, the year when this was discussed. And at that point in time, it had full support of everyone, including the bike committee. You know, this, uh, venture, um, as well as a transfer station, i- is owned jointly, and I, I don't think, Bourne has the, uh, right to dictate what we do. And also, as I said, if these tracks come up, they benefit in another way at their transfer station. And that's why they're, uh, wholeheartedly, uh, supporting, uh, ripping these tracks up because they already pocket money every day from the town of Falmouth at their transfer station, and I don't think anybody should forget that.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Ms. Lowell.
Oh. Ms. Lowell? And then I see you.
Hello, uh, Victoria Lowell, uh, from Precinct One and a forty-five-year town meeting member. So I've been thinking about a lot of these different things over time, and I just think that, um, I just don't want to see us making decisions just because we don't like what Bourne did. I mean, we, it's our job to get along with each other. And, uh, I think that they're responding to the very, the demand in their community, thinking this would be a great idea and realizing it is infeasible with, um, rail beside trail. So just don't make your decision based on, oh, Bourne didn't consult us enough. It's, 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 it's always hard in any political decision to know when you have enough information to make a decision. They thought they had enough information to do rail-by-trail, but it, then they realized, oh, we, now we have this information that is really not feasible. So, you know, oh, who knows where we'll be in thirty years, but, um, I think we won't be using that rail, that very scenic railroad bridge. And also, it's not as if, if we give up the Falmouth spur, we're not keeping tra- trains from coming on the Cape. Some, some of the comments seem to be saying that. Trains will still come to the Cape because they, they could go along the canal and, uh, on the tracks there and, and go to the rest of the Cape. We might be able to, over time, figure out a much faster rail. I mean, I'm, I know, I was at a meeting where, uh, Mr. Carvosa suggested we build the, a bike trail up along Twenty-Eight. And, and, you know, it was very scenic it would be, but, but you could also do a rail there. And, and I think if we, I've all, I've heard so many different comments about what the military says, how much they need this track or how much they don't. And I don't, I don't feel like I really know. So I, I do feel if you had a public forum to, to get the people that really have the expertise to say how they're using it or how they're not using it, it would be helpful before you make a, a further decision. You still have the two thousand nineteen letter? That's still on the record. You haven't, you don't have to change it right now, but you could listen more and maybe come up with a different idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowell. Yes, Mr. Leary.
Bob Leary again. Uh, this comes down to what is a want versus what is a need. And I feel that we all want a, a bike trail. It would be great to have one go to.
Please let him speak.
It would be nice to have that go to Bourne, but to me, th- this is something that we want, but do we really need it? I don't think it's a, a vital need as compared to the viability of the rail line that services us now and, and will into the future.
Thank you. Um, hold on, hold on, Mr. Carvosa, because you have, anyone else want to speak?
You sure you don't want to speak? You talk when everybody else is up.
Athena Clark, County Road. I'm not equipped to discuss the issue of the trail, I mean, the train and the necessity for the train. The only point that I want to make is, to my understanding, if you support. if you support keeping the track, the trail will go. For all the reasons that have been stated, it costs $80 million, which would be solely taxpayer money versus the other current plan for $20 million for which a grant is in hand, that money will be pulled back immediately once a decision is made to not take up the track. So, it's really a matter, for me as a bicyclist, you are making a decision, basically, to do away with all the work that's been done. And yes, it's true, Falmouth can extend the path a little bit and Bourne can extend it a little bit, but you have that problem, that there are all these miles in between, that the trail cannot be built without the track coming up. So, that's the decision you're going to make. Thank you very much.
I'll take Mr. Cavosa and then you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, and I appreciate your time. I know you've been here a long time. The threats that if you don't approve ripping up the track, that the trail will never be built is absolutely ridiculous. There are plenty of, there are plenty of viable routes to bring this bike path to connect not only the canal, but the Upper Cape Regional School, the National Cemetery, Otis Air National Guard Base, Mashpee High School. They have $20 million. This isn't about building a bike path. Everybody understands that, right? This is about a small.
Sir, please, you had your opportunity.
This is a.
And you can go twice again, but you need to let him speak.
This is about a small group of people, some of which border the rail, that want to rip up the track. They have $20 million. For $20 million, you couldn't build a bike path from Bourne to Falmouth? Right now, there's an easement on the east side of Route 28 that goes from Otis Rotary all the way to the bridge. There's supposed to be two lanes of highway in there. They've never been built. The two lanes that are southbound are supposed to be service lanes to service all those businesses. With the $20 million bucks, they could build two beautiful bridges going over 28. We built them down in Yarmouth for the bike path, right? We crossed 28 over here in North Falmouth with the bike path to go to Goodwill Park. Cross 28 with the bridges and dump into those communities. And you could build a beautiful bike path and you could connect the canal with the Shining Sea Bike Way, also the Upper Cape Tech High School, the National Cemetery, which is a treasure, all the way into Mashpee to go to Mashpee Commons and all that because you'd be on that side of Route 28.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Lenny Collins. I live in 50 Minot Street in the village here. Earlier, when you were deciding about allotments for various things, we talked about trash and so forth. So, I've seen estimates that if composting were done with trash, 30 percent reduction in the refuse would take place. One of the comments earlier was that we have a very robust recycling, which could be improved, too. So, one of the things that we might want to think about before we decide to do that is maybe we're not looking at trash. We generate a lot of it. The CND, it was talked about, one of the fees that was mentioned today was the over-million-dollar transfer fee for affordable housing. Could something be done with that in order to do something else with our trash? So, there's a, there's a whole nother side to this, is also reducing what we need to do. So, there's conservation. We talked about resiliency and global impact, global warming. So, those are also things to do. So, my issue is like this, is hold off on reinforcing the 2019 thing. Let's wait, have some more discussions and see what, and see what can come up with that. There are lots of other experts and things to listen to.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
Allison Leschen, Lantern Lane. Yeah, I want to echo that last comment that the, I guess I'm just completely confused by the process at this point because we saw, you know, again, we found out two days ago, saw 10 minutes on the agenda, in no way thought there would be, you know, an hour or whatever it's been now of public meetings. So, we're, this, people are doing an amazing job speaking, given that they didn't really prepare anything. We were not able to get sort of the experts in the room on such short notice. I think it's really a disservice to the town to make a decision right now without, this is like a wing-it public forum. That is not the way you want to make a decision that's going to affect this town for generations to come. This is, if you look at the amount of use that the Shining Sea Bike Way gets, the fact that it's a want versus a need, you know, that's, we're a tourist town. You know, 300,000 people using that bike path every year. You know, you could call that a want. You could call it frivolous. You could call that a small group of little disinterest, you know, little special interest group. But that is a huge number of people who use that trail for any number of reasons, including commuting, including recreation, et cetera. So, to sort of dismiss that is very disingenuous. And I think, I think this process is just not doing justice to this issue.
Let me ask about the previous process. Was there a public forum in 2019 when the previous select board wrote that letter?
There was not. No, it was, I believe it came up at a meeting and at that first meeting it was voted. And then there was a technical correction at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. I was just curious.
There has never been an opportunity to say in two months, we're going to, so, both sides, get your experts together, get them there on that date, have presentations ready. Let's actually get all the real facts out in front of you all. And then you can make a decision based on all of the information that people have, you know, had a chance to prepare and present in a coherent way instead of getting up here and, you know, at 10 o'clock at night and winging it, which is what we're mostly doing. So.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you to hold it because you've spoken a couple of times. I'm going to bring it back to the board and see what it is that the board, how the board would like to move forward.
Well, we made a decision in 2019 in what I believe is in the interest of our town, not just the people that ride bicycles, but the whole town for the infrastructure needs that we have identified. I think it's short-sighted, as Mr. Leary mentioned, to just tear up infrastructure that is serving a useful need right now and will be there for us in the future. So, I don't think, I'm going to change my position on ripping up the tracks in any, just because some scientist tells me or geologist tells me that there's areas where this track can't be added to another, a trail on the side of it. If it's not feasible, let's explore the trolley idea. But I just, right now, I'm not ready to change my mind about the tracks.
Mr. Muscally, did you want to comment?
Yeah. First of all, let's realize what we're doing is we're going to send a letter or not send a letter to the governor's office with respect to this trail. It's not our decision. The ultimate decision is going to be made by another entity. It's not our call. A number of people have come out in full support of the bike without, Bike Way without the trail. A number of representatives have gone on record, K-Coalition, I think, has gone on record. There are a number of individuals who've looked at it and made a decision. When I came here tonight, I was almost definitely against supporting the letter. But I've heard a lot of comments from Peter, you know, "I want to accept what our staff is telling us is important, what Mr. Renshaw is telling us." But I do think we're at a point where we also may need to think about it a little bit more before we go forward with the letter at this point. So, I would not support the letter at this point, not necessarily because I disagree with what's been mentioned, what Mr. Renshaw's recommendation is. But I think that maybe some further discussion on my part, some further investigation is warranted.
I'm ready to vote this. You guys have all got up here. You've all expressed your points. Not one of you has talked about, all the people that are coming here, the added tourism creates trash that we have to get rid of, that you guys have to pay for. So, when we come back and we say we can't afford to haul our trash, we need to look into an alternative to do trail with rail, nobody wants to hear that. Nobody, nobody, I didn't hear anybody say that, oh, we're rushing through this. You guys are rushing through this, too, because there's money that needs to be spent at a certain, in a certain time. Didn't hear one person say that. So, you're rushing just like you think we're rushing. And for Mr. Brown to say we're looking for the town, we're looking for the interests for all of the town. And trash disposal, whether you want to hear it or not, is an essential service that we are responsible to provide for you. There are other places to ride. There are other alternatives to riding the bike and things we can look at. If we're going to be realistic with each other, let's be realistic about the whole picture. And that's our responsibility to provide service for you and not let it fail. So, that's what, that's where I stand on it. So, I'm prepared to vote on supporting Mr. Renshaw's letter. And I've been on the other side of issues before and I'm all right with that. I feel strongly about providing an essential service to people.
Any other comments from the board? Did I miss a hand over here? I'll take two more. I thought, I thought I saw a hand. I will take two more comments from here and then we're going to, we're going to wrap this up and figure out how the board's going to move forward.
My name is Paul Silvia. I'm the president of the Friends of the Falmouth Bike Way. Of course, we're here in support, but I think one thing that's come out of this meeting is that a lot of new information has popped up. And I see that there's a tendency or, well, two people have already stated that they've made their mind up and it's not going to be changed. And I think that's very unfair to the people who are supporting pulling up the tracks. There are innumerable reasons for having a bike path. It's just not sightseeing and recreation. It's people that work and use that trail. It's people from on the other side of the canal who have voted the Falmouth Shining Sea Bike Way as the number-one attraction to Falmouth. There's value here. It generates business for the businesses in town, coffee shops, bike shops, clothing, other apparel. These people come to this town strictly for the purpose of riding the Bike Way. I live 50 yards from it and right near Station Grill. And I talk to a lot of the people that are getting in their cars or parking there for lunch. And invariably, I get so many positive reactions from the visitors who enjoy the path. For a decision to be made at this point, this was a two-day preparation. That's ridiculous to make a $20 million decision, $80 million decision. We don't even know if that figure is accurate because I don't think that that $80 million includes any of the land taking. So, I think that a lot of work has to go into this before a final decision is made. There is a reason why Bourne Selectmen unanimously switched to the rail to trail. The Cape Cod Regional Transportation, they got the $20 million grant from the federal government. They're supporting it. The Cape Cod Commission has Vision 88. And if you're not aware of that, it's an 88-mile path that's going to run from Provincetown to Woods Hole. And one of the integral or major blocking to that is the six-and-a-half-mile stretch from North Falmouth to Bourne. That needs to be linked, and that's a priority of the Cape Cod Commission. So, I'm just asking that we hit the pause button and come back to this another day, another three or four days or whatever it takes to have a well-reasoned decision made.
Thank you. One more comment? Sir?
I have a question while he comes up.
Yes.
Is there a timeframe, a time limit on sending this letter? Is there a preferred or an actual limit?
No, there's not. To my knowledge, there's no time limit. Again, I indicated earlier that based upon my research, there've been several letters submitted to the governor's office. Our previous letter back in 2019 was not submitted to the governor's office. So, I just wanted, whatever the select board's decision is in 2023, I wanted that information to be conveyed to the governor's office.
So, where are the letters going to the governor's office? From whom are they coming?
Oh, so, I can, I can tell you. So, February 14th, 2023, Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative sent a letter to the governor's office.
Okay, so there are other agencies, other interested parties, just?
There's multiple. And again, the, February 14th, 2023, the Association to Preserve Cape Cod sent a letter to the governor's office and to the Honorable William Keating.
Got it.
And there's others. There's probably half a dozen. The Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce in February 2023 issued a letter.
And so, in 2019, the Select Board of Falmouth sent a letter?
Correct. And that letter was sent to?
Who was on the board at that time, Mr. Johnson Staub?
I was.
Do you know who your colleagues were at the time? Do you remember?
Doug Jones, Megan English.
Jim Moran, Angus Maitland, Sam Patterson.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, the letter was sent in 2019 from the Select Board to the Recreational Trails Program Manager, Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation.
But not, not the governor's office? Where are the other letters are going? Thank you for that.
But it's fair to assume that that letter filed its way to the governor's office, I would think.
Not really.
Not really. I think that's a jump. But go ahead, sir. We just, I needed clarification on that.
My name's Jim Borden. I sit at Pond Road, Falmouth. I'm not fully versed on everything on both sides here. Trash is very important. We need to be able to take care of that. It's absolutely essential. The rail trail, I use it three, four times a week at least. I love the rail trail. I would love to see it get to Bourne. But listening to everybody tonight, it just sounds like we don't have all our facts. We don't have, we have opinions and we have a lot of thoughts about this, but I haven't heard anything about the economic value of if we did extend the rail trail, what that would mean to Falmouth. And, you know, is it essential if we don't, if it's the trail next to the rail, is it done? Then I've heard people say it will kill the whole project then as far as the rail, the trail going to Bourne. But I don't know if that, how much is speculation or how much is fact. It sounds like unless there's an urgent need to get this letter to the governor's office next week or something like that, that more time is necessary for the town, for everyone here to understand what's at stake, what the costs are, and what the impact is going to be for this decision. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
This letter is just a reiteration of our position. We don't have any real new information to cause us to change our mind, other than your testimony here today. Maybe we will find out some more information. Maybe our position will change in the future. But right now, we're finding out from our town manager that other le- But right now, we're finding out from our town manager that other letters are being sent to the governor's office, opposing our current position, which we voted in 2019. I don't see any harm, and I, I think we should send a letter just to alert them that we still have a concern about this, because it does affect our community. And then if we want to have another forum and talk about it, get more information, I don't think there's anything prohibiting that. This is just another letter, just informing our position, current position, which could change if there's more information.
Ms. Scott Price?
Well, the reason I asked the question about the potential timeline, and it's good to understand that there's other letters that have come in, is because, I, I agree, I don't see the harm in having a, a discussion about it if there's no urgency to it. It's obvious that people feel very strongly on both sides, and I think it's our duty to at least listen, and I don't think that, that this is a sufficient place to have listened to all of the points that I think should be considered in making this decision.
Mr. Muscally?
I, I mean, maybe, Mr. Renshaw's letter goes into great detail as to what, what our position is, which is a bit further than what, what was said in 2019. You know, maybe if, if we see the need to put the governor's notice, the governor's office on notice, maybe just send them a copy of the letter we sent in 2019 and indicate that it's still an issue that this, that the, that the town is discussing as far as the ultimate, the ultimate decision. But put them on notice so that they have that letter, if that's a concern of, of the Select Board. But indicate maybe that, you know, that we're still looking at it. Mr. Renshaw's letter was just a draft, could be, could some, something else could go out to the governor's office without that detail at this point.
It's not very timely, just sending an old letter from 2019.
Well, I think, just saying, you know, just, this was the position that was taken back in 2019, we would just want to make sure the governor's office is aware of it, and the town of Falmouth is still looking into, you know, this issue as to whether or not it wants to support one option or the other.
That's basically what the letter says.
No, I think the letter?
It's pretty short.
I think, I think the letter's much, much more detailed than, than that. But I do feel that warrants some more discussion as well.
Well, I, I think I'm gonna hold off. I'm gonna hold off.
A point of clarification?
What is it?
That this issue I brought up at a public comment at the Falmouth Planning Board to discuss whether we should write a letter in response to the four-page ad or the half-page ad in the Enterprise that the SavesTheBiketrail.org had put on, in the, in the newspaper. The Bike Committee people came, they were allowed to give a presentation, which they did, they complained about that. Then there was a slew of letters to the paper. The Enterprise dedicated a whole page of letters to the, about this issue. And this was on the agenda tonight. So to say that this has been short notice and all that, they've, they've been dealing with this since about August, September.
Please let him speak.
And to the point where they've been putting signs on the bike trail about Save the Trail. And it's like, I find it hard to say something that doesn't exist. So you talk about being disingenuous, I think that's pretty disingenuous.
Okay, thank you. I think we should bring this to a vote. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I move that we continue with Mr. Renshaw's letter. I don't see any need to, to hold off. It doesn't preclude further action or consideration or further hearings. And if you want to hold it for some time until we can have a hearing, I'd be, I would agree to that too, but personally, I find either way. I don't see any reason to wait.
Okay, so are you making a motion, Mr. Brown?
Let me clarify that motion.
What's the motion, though?
It's, I haven't made the motion, I'm just stating my position.
Okay.
That I would be willing to wait if the board feels like we want to wait for some more information. But I'm also ready to vote if that's not the sense of the board.
Well, I'd motion to hold off on the letter and to hold some sort of public discussion before sending another letter.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Any projected timeframe, Mr. Renshaw, when we might gather more information to, to discuss this again?
I'm, I'm sorry, timeframe for scheduling a further public?
Yeah, just an idea.
Visiting? At, at the board's discretion, you, you, you tell me, we can set that up. I mean, the holidays are fast approaching, obviously, so it would have to be sometime after the first of the year.
Yeah.
Okay, we have?
Middle of January, maybe?
We have a motion and a second to hold off. I think we need to bring that to a vote.
I'm just wondering how long we're gonna hold off? If it's gonna be like the?
We don't know yet.
There's really no time constraint.
Right.
Okay.
It'll probably be January. But we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion fails.
Well, I'm not making another motion.
So does anyone want to make another motion?
I'll make a motion to, to authorize the town manager to send a letter as prescribed.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed.
No.
No. Okay, so it's a three to two. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on. Mr. Renshaw announced the April 2024 town meeting schedule, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Select Board. Included in your packet is a proposed schedule for the April 8th, 2024 annual town meeting, announced by the chair at the November annual town meeting. The proposed schedule is very similar to the lone, one that was adopted at the April, for the April 2023 town meeting. The dates for Select Board actions align very closely with the Select Board meeting schedule recently adopted for 2024. Madam Chair, it's my recommendation that Select Board vote to adopt and approve the April 2024 annual town meeting schedule as submitted.
I wonder, make a motion?
I'd motion to adopt the 2020, April 2024 town meeting schedule as submitted.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, we're gonna move into the approved, the annual license renewals for 2024. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to get through this quickly.
Roll that over to you.
So the, so the annual applica- renewal applications and checklist for all of the required, and all the required documents of payments due were sent to all the licensees. I want to thank, sincerely thank, the efforts of our office, front office staff, Phyllis and Diane. Phyllis in particular, and I would be remiss without saying this, spends hours, I'm gonna go through the next five or 10 minutes talking with you about this and asking for your approval. Phyllis Downey spends hours working with the businesses, and it's, she does a great job, so many thanks to Phyllis. The below-listed licensees have submitted all of the required documentation on the checklist, and the licenses are ready to be approved for renewal for 2024. And Madam Chair, if you would allow me, I'm gonna run this, or try to run through this the same way I have the past couple of versions. We're gonna do this by, by alcohol.
Yes, and just a reminder to the board, if there's any particular thing you want to hold, please notify me as the chair.
I'm gonna read the names of the businesses individually, but under the categories. And at the end of the categories, I'd ask Select Board to take a vote to approve those businesses listed under that category. Firstly, under the category of all alcohol restaurant with common victualler license, Anhehl Mexican Bistro, 188 Main Street, Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, 7 Nathan Ellis Highway, Casa Vierta, 70 Davis Straits, Epic Oysters, 70 County Road, Falmouth Country Club, 630 Carrot Shop Road, Moto Pizza, 500 Wacoit Highway, Osteria La Ceveta, 133 Main Street, Paul Harney Golf Enterprises Incorporated, 74 Club Valley Drive, Pickle Jar Kitchen, 170 Main Street, Provisions, 7 Water Street, Quarter Deck Restaurant, 164 Main Street, Second Esset Golf Club, 132 Falmouth Woods Road, Simply Divine, 261 Main Street, Unit A, Taco Blanco, 870 Main Street, Unit E, The Black Dog Heights Cafe, 465 Grand Avenue, The Golden Swan, 323 Main Street, and lastly, The Water Street Kitchen, 56 Water Street. Madam Chair and Select Board, I'd request, if there are no questions, that Select Board take a vote to approve the businesses listed under the all alcohol restaurant with common victualler license.
So moved. Second. Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next category is all alcohol package store license. Falmouth Food Mart and Liquor, 414 East Falmouth Highway, Family Foods, 350 East Falmouth Highway, Kenyon Market and Liquors LLC, doing business as Kenyon's Market, Merse Flicks Incorporated, doing business as Murphy's Package Store, 410 West Falmouth Highway, Old Barn Package Store, 20 Luscombe Avenue, RJ's Variety and Liquors, 174 Sandwich Road, and lastly, West Falmouth Market, 623 West Falmouth Highway. These are all of the businesses asking renewal for all alcohol package stores.
Thank you. Sorry. Do I have a motion? So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The third, the third category, a quick one, is wine and malt and cordial restaurant with common victualler. The sole restaurant or businesses, Dogs and Hogs, 781 Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Fourth category is wine and malt restaurant with common victualler. Pizza, 1 and Subs, 2, 769 East Falmouth Highway, and lastly, Seafood Sam's, 356 Palmer Avenue.
So moved. Do I have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Fifth category is wine and malt package store, Jack and the Beanstalk, 800 Gifford Street Extended, OSJL Spirits LLC, doing business as Ocean State Job Lot, 50 Ticket, T-Ticket Highway, and lastly, Windfield Market, 77 Scranton Avenue.
Moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next category is brewery winery, and the sole business listed is Cape Cod Winery 4 Oxbow Road.
So moved. Second. Do I have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next category is common victualler. Listed under this category is Burger King, 111 T-Ticket Highway, Dana's Kitchen, 881 Palmer Avenue, Percy's Place, 40 North Main Street, Prime House, Primetime House of Pizza, 286 Old Main Road, Supreme Pizza, 147 T-Ticket Highway, and, and that's the final business under that common victualler category.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Next category of business renewal is in holder, and the sole business located in this category, or under this category is Shoreway Acres, 59 Shore Street.
So moved.
Second. Do I have a motion and a second to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Under the entertainment category, the following businesses have applied for renewal, Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, 7 Nathan Ellis Highway, Cape Cod Winery, 4 Oxbow Road, Moto Pizza, 500 Wacoit Highway, Pickle Jar Kitchen, 170 Main Street, Provisions at 7 Main, 7 Water Street, Quarter Deck Restaurant, 164 Main Street, Second Esset Golf Club, 132 Falmouth Woods Road, Simply Divine, 261 Main Street, Unit A, and lastly, The Black Dog Heights Cafe at 465 Grand Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve under entertainment. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next category is Sunday Entertainment, Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, 7 Nathan, 7 Nathan Ellis Highway, Cape Cod Winery, 4 Oxbow Road, Provisions at 7 Water Street, and Second Esset Golf Club, 132 Falmouth Woods Road.
So moved.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Madam Chair and Select Board, the last category of businesses is automatic amusement device, and the sole business is Pizza, 1 and Subs, 2, 769 East Falmouth Highway.
So moved.
Uh, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So all those went through, yeah?
Yes. We went, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Licenses, approved application for a change of DBA. WoHo LLC, doing business as Provisions, located at 87 Water Street, Unit 2. Administrative orders. Approved petition from Enstar Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy for permission to install and maintain underground cables, conduits, manholes, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said company may deem necessary in, under, and along and across the public way or ways. Stevens Lane, Jones Road, Turhune Drive, Depot Ave, Cemetery Lane, Mill Road, Surf Drive. This work is necessary to provide electric service for the Fa- for Falmouth to Martha's Vineyard Cable Reliability Project. And lastly, accepted donation in the amount of $500 from the Roger and Kathy Marino Foundation to the Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department.
Madam Chair, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to move the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, meeting review and approve minutes of the meeting's public session, November 20th, 2023.
Hope you enjoyed our meeting.
We always do.
I didn't see anything. I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
I'll second.
November 20th, 2023.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the meetings of November 20, 2023 public session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town manager supplemental report.
No written report, Madam Chair, just a comment, a note of thanks. Want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, their staff had an opportunity this weekend to participate in the stroll and then the parade yesterday. What a fantastic job. Chamber did a great job organizing it, all the volunteers, hundreds, and, and lastly but not least, the DPW and staff for all of the work that they put into the both events.
Absolutely.
And how about the residents and little kids, bringing, getting out there in the rain to cheer us on?
And lots, a lot of residents and kids.
Rising.
Okay, we'll move on to Select Board reports. Mr. Muscally?
Nothing.
Mr. Brown?
Well, attended a meeting this afternoon with the Urine Diffusion Toilet Working Group, and we had a meeting with Senator Moran's staff. Three of the staff members joined us just to get a sense of what the project entails and the potential scope, and try to identify funding mechanisms where they might be able to help us. It's not really super hopeful. There's an environmental bond bill that's gonna be maybe two or three million dollars, but we know how difficult it is to get money out of a bond bill. You know, it's, it's a feel-good legislation. But maybe there could be something in the budget line item. We're hoping it's something between $50,000 and $200,000 to try to help us seed money for other grant opportunities that we might come along, so it's not totally out of the question, but we don't know what we can really count on. There's no real firm commitment to what can be put into the budget at the state level. And that's my main thing for today.
Okay, Ms. Scott Price?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the record, when I was doing recognition earlier, the firefighter that I was referring to is Lieutenant Patrick Freel, and I blanked on his name, but I, I found it. So I'm hoping that in the record, under recognition, we can put his official title and name.
Anything else?
That's all.
Mr. Zlinski?
I just piggyback a little bit off of what Mr. Renshaw said about the, the Christmas parade. It was, no, no matter what, the weather and the conditions, this community continues to come out and support each other, and it's just, it's, it's heartwarming to see.
Agreed. And just, if I could just comment, we did receive an email to remind us about this, the hearing for Senator Moran's bill regarding steamship authority issues. If anybody wants to send written comment, it's there.
And I, the only thing I would ask of the board is to get me a date for Saturday in February, because we're gonna need a workshop.
And I'll just make note, I will not be at the next meeting.
You're gonna be busy.
I hope to be busy, yes.
So you won't be here?
At the next meeting, no. No matter what happens, I will not be at the next meeting.
Or doesn't happen.
Whatever happens or doesn't happen, I will not be at the next meeting, yes.
Okay.
One way or another, something's gonna happen.
Something's gonna happen, yes.
So what's, our thoughts are with you.
With you.